All right. Good afternoon, folks. It is now 12:01 PM, so we are going to get started. I am Councilman John Bullock, Chair of our Education Youth and Older Adults Committee. We are, I want to make sure we note the folks we have in attendance. We do have Council President Zee Cohen. We have Vice Chair Mark Parker, Councilman of the First District. We have Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton of the Sixth District. We have Councilman James Torrance of the Seventh District, Councilman Jermaine Jones of the Twelfth District, and Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District. Thankfully, we also have committee staff to my right, Trey Hayes. Okay, and so today, our committee is holding a legislative oversight hearing for LO 250014 Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund for the purpose of holding a committee hearing to give updates on the status of and/or activities associated with the fund. I do want to give time to also talk about some of the folks that are here with us from the Council President's office, from the Mayor's office. We've gotten some reports today regarding an infusion of resources for the youth fund. So that's very exciting, probably the best news I've heard today. So that's good to hear. But I do want to at least open up to the Council President, if you have any initial comments, before we go to our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Lee, colleagues, and the whole BCYF team, and all the grantees for being here. Baltimore's children deserve to be supported and loved by the leaders whose decisions impact their lives. They are growing up in unprecedented times. Washington, B.C. is in chaos. The Department of Education is being dismantled. Its Office of Civil Rights gutted. The state of Maryland is facing a over $3 billion budget deficit. The impact on Baltimore isn't clear yet, but it isn't going to be good. In this moment of uncertainty, we all must do more. I am concerned about the state of Baltimore's youth-serving nonprofit sector. I say this as someone who used to run a nonprofit that served kids, and I say this with deep respect and admiration for many of the extraordinary groups and leaders in this space. I worry about a lack of fiscal stability for many of our smaller organizations. Seeing Fusion Partnership fall apart just a few years after Strong City was deeply concerning. What happens when organizations that are doing good work for kids don't have the fiscal management capacity to survive an audit? I worry about a lack of strategic alignment between government and youth-serving organizations around our city. We have the Children and Youth Fund, Family League, the Civic Fund, all of which work with nonprofits. We have many foundations that give out grants. I worry about a lack of data sharing and consensus around key priorities. At a time when we must demonstrate collective impact to move the needle for our kids, I worry that still, too often in Baltimore, we're in silos. Let me be clear. Baltimore is a compassionate city that cares deeply about our kids. I am grateful to the many organizations that go above and beyond. Your work matters. I have seen no evidence of wrongdoing within the Children and Youth Fund. And now is the time to think critically about everything we do with an eye toward accountability, transparency, and improving systems. I look forward to this conversation and thank Chairman Bullock for his leadership and for hosting it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we go to the Youth Fund CEO and the staff, I do want to provide an opportunity for the Mayor's office to provide any comments. As I mentioned before, the infusion of resources is something that's much needed. I know there were concerns that some of us had around some of the gaps in funding. So if you could run that down, that'd be very helpful, too. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of Baltimore City Council. I'm J.D. Merrill, interim Deputy Mayor for Equity Health and Human Services. We just released a press release about 30 minutes ago announcing new investment with BCYF. We've been working with President and CEO Lee, Board Chair Simmons, and the team at BCYF to make sure that we're really shoring up critical investments for our young people heading into the summer months. You are very well of the difficult fiscal challenges that the city, state, and nation face right now. And we wanted to make sure that ahead of the Mayor's budget release in the next couple of weeks, that we made it really clear where we stand, and that's standing with our young people. And so what we just announced this morning is that BCYF will be contributing $500,000 towards the youth sports initiative that City School CEO Dr. Sanalisis and Mayor Scott have been working on over the last couple of years. Some of you may recall, City Schools traditionally has just had middle school sports for basketball and, I think, track was the other one. You know, Dr. Sanalisis and Mayor Scott both understand the power of sport for transforming lives. And so City Schools has made a big investment over the last two years to expand that to seven sports within the school system. Councilman Torrance stood with Dr. Sanalisis and Mayor Scott this time last year at the Druid Hill Y to announce an expansion last year. City Schools is going to continue their level of investment. But with this investment from BCYF, we're going to be able to double it and expand to even more young people that will have access to sport in fiscal year '26. So that's the first part. The second part is BCYF is going to be supporting Youth Works this year to the tune of $6 million. Last summer, we had just under 9,000 summer jobs for our young people through Youth Works. We wanted to make sure that we maintain that level of investment and ensured that that same number of people had access to employment this summer. And we're really grateful that BCYF came to the table and said, "That's a priority of ours as well." And we want to join the Mayor, Director Garvin, and the team at Moed in ensuring that they have that support. And then lastly, some of you may be familiar with the Mayor's Summer Youth Engagement Initiative that he started two summers ago. It has helped reduce youth as victims and perpetrators of violence, where we have outreach workers throughout the summer, including social workers, who are connecting and building relationships with our young people in the areas where we know young people congregate during the summer. And if they're out past curfew, encouraging them to go home. We know that if young people have a job over the summer, they're more likely to go home, so they're rested up, so they can go to work the next day. And BCYF has come in to invest $1.5 million in that strategy, which we also announced this morning. And so we're so grateful for the partnership with BCYF. I want to echo the Council President's comments about what an important role they're playing in our youth grant-making ecosystem, helping build capacity. You know, one of the things I always think about, Mr. Council President, is when you were a teacher, you took kids down to New Orleans, right, to help rebuild after Hurricane Katrina. Isn't that true? And how you've reflected on what that experience meant for those young people. Many of their peers didn't get that experience to leave Baltimore. And many of them may now be leading small nonprofits, but have not had the chance to see what other cities' nonprofit ecosystem looks like. They maybe haven't traveled the country or the world. And so what BCYF is doing in providing professional development and technical support is so important, and the administration really appreciates all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you, J.D. Is there a question of Councilman Torrance?
Yes, sir. I'm going to echo what I've said for the last four years. Happy to hear the announcement, but also for those small, black grassroots organizations that still cannot get access to City Schools' funds through ESAR and the validation that they need, City Schools has not made headway to have that relationship furthered. I think that from this conversation, BCYF is giving in City Schools, but has not given back to those that they actually support through this pipeline. So I just want to highlight, our young people are being supported by BCYF, but City Schools is not making sure that those small grassroots, black-led organizations who are led by grandmothers, aunties, and uncles, and people who put out their own money still can't get funding from City Schools because of the validation they need and the research that they need. And I keep echoing this every year. They come to the table and ask, "They can support," but City Schools does not. So I think that if we're going to take the next step and move forward with an ecosystem, that ecosystem has to have a 360 investment. And it has to not just be BCYF, but City Schools investing in those small grassroots organizations. And I would like to see a commitment from City Schools prior to their budget hearing before that.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. I will say, this is one of the reasons why we're really excited about this partnership. BCYF is going to set up a youth-serving athletics fund that will have this initial contribution of half a million. And through that, BCYF will be managing a grant-making process where youth athletics-serving organizations will be to be able to apply. And that's not just to receive grant funding. They're going to receive the same suite of technical assistance and professional development that their existing grantees receive. And through that, we'll be able to see more partnership between the organizations that you're speaking of and City Schools.
That's not true. Just to be frank, they still have to meet the ESAR levels. Yes, that's not true, because they still have to meet the ESAR levels to actually get funding, whether it be at ESAR Level 1, 2, or 3. And they still can't get the evaluations to get the ESAR levels to get the funding, whether it's through City Schools' pre-qualification services. Again, BCYF is giving to City Schools, but the ecosystem in which they are supporting and lifting up is not being fed by City Schools. So I just want to echo, like, while I hear you and I celebrate what they've done to help City Schools, what I want City Schools to do is invest in people who are investing in them.
I appreciate the sentiment. Respectfully, the Councilman disagrees. This is funds that BCYF is going to be distributing directly to grassroots organizations that will basically cover the cost of that organization that provides services to City Schools. And so there might be a small grassroots organization that's providing ice hockey to just a couple of schools, and through a grant, might be able to expand and serve even more schools. So these aren't federal grant funds with restrictions. These are dollars that BCYF will be able to distribute through grants to help organizations expand their impact in City Schools.
And I'll just say, Councilman Torrance, thank you for raising the point. J.D., I appreciate, you know, your response. I think what you're raising is something that needs a deeper conversation and deeper attention as well. And I do want to get to the Youth Fund presentation and what they're actually doing. I don't want to get hung up on the school system.
No, I just have one last comment, because I just want to be very clear for the public. I've helped, yes, I've helped organizations get the ESAR funding, right? City Schools never goes that deep to give them the technical assistance to get the ESAR funding. And whether or not, they don't use, and to be frank, if you look at City Schools much, they never use general dollars for whole child benefits outside of their staffing, right? So when everything goes out to their actual vendors, it is based off of federal funds and whatever grant dollars they get from the state, which is a pass-through for the federal government. So I want City Schools to take a step and allow these organizations to have access to that same federal pockets of dollars. To give you an example, City Schools just had a PQS that gave out $20 million of possible guaranteed contracts to people that could do services in schools, where there are black-led organizations who are not getting access. So I would like the administration, as well as City Schools, to come to the table and have a legitimate conversation about how to get access to those federal dollars.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything else for the administration?
Yes, I mean, I think it's the administration, but inasmuch as you're here presenting, and certainly, BCYF might have opinions, too. Certainly was excited to hear about and grateful for is, we had conversations earlier this week about summer and what it was looking like, both on Monday and then on Tuesday. And so grateful for BCYF to be a really active and generous partner in supporting some of our programs. This strikes me in some ways, though, as a pretty big shift in terms of the relationship, financial relationship, or programmatic relationship between the city and BCYF. Again, it's an evolving relationship, because the organization is relatively new. To my knowledge, and again, my experience here is limited, to my knowledge, very rarely, if at all, have BCYF funds traveled back in the direction of city government and city programs as opposed to out into the community. And in fact, my read of the underlying documents, charter and things like that, implies a movement outwards, not a kind of a circular movement back towards. So in particular, the $6 million towards Youth Works, which we know we desperately need. And I've been a Youth Works site supervisor for a decade now. So incredibly important program, one of the best in the city. Grateful to have the financial support. But it strikes me, this is a fundamentally different financial reshaping of this relationship. And I wonder if that doesn't call for a broader and more thoughtful conversation involving all the partners, including the council, which established BCYF and passed the legislation authorizing it.
Yeah, I would just say that we're about to have a lot of conversations around the fiscal year '26 budget and think that that would be appropriate to have at that time as the budget comes before council.
Well, again, thank you for both the comments, the answering the questions, and the questions are raised by members of the council and members of the committee. So I appreciate that. At this point, I do want to turn it over to our President and CEO of the Youth Fund. Would you please introduce yourself and your team, and we can get started with your presentation?
Yes, good afternoon, City Council members and colleagues and community partners. We're going to be introducing ourselves throughout the presentation. My name is Alicia Lee, and I'm the President and CEO of the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. Thank you for the opportunity to share about BCYF's vision and impact over the last year. We are guided by our vision for more justice, abundance, and creativity in Baltimore. And so today, we've prepared a 30-minute presentation where we're going to share three powerful sections that are in alignment with our vision: justice, creativity, and abundance. We're going to highlight how we have transformed access to youth development funding, how we've strengthened grassroots organizations through capacity building, and how we've ensured stability and sustainability for more community-led initiatives. And then finally, we'll close out our presentation by sharing our commitment to working alongside you and also other stakeholders to develop Baltimore's first youth master plan, also expanding opportunities for Baltimore's young people. And it's my pleasure now to introduce our Board Chair, Larry C. Simmons.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, City Council, colleagues, neighbors, and community partners. Baltimore is a city full of possibilities, and BCYF believes in unlocking the potential by investing directly in those grassroots organizations that directly serve our young people every day. We envision a just, abundant, and creative Baltimore where youth have access to opportunity, mentorship, and the resources they need to thrive. Our dual-investment approach is, right now, 75% direct grants with 25% in technical assistance and capacity building. This ensures that community organizations that too often don't have the relationships or funds to receive both financial support and the tools to grow and sustain their organization and impact.
And the impact of BCYF really speaks for itself. BCYF has awarded over $32 million, $31 million since 2020, and currently supports over 100 organizations. Over 80% of the grants are multi-year grants, and the organizations are majority-black and brown-led, grassroots-driven, and directly providing over 17,000 Baltimore youth seats all across the city. In the last year, we've increased grantee compliance from 30% to 90%, over 90% year-to-date, with the full launch of our capacity-building and technical assistance programs. And our capacity-building reach continues to grow with over 700 unique individuals participating in more than 100 hours of capacity-building programming designed to strengthen organizations and empower youth-serving leaders.
And we're not stopping there. Our next bold move is convening intergenerational city leaders to co-create Baltimore's first youth master plan, a roadmap that will outline a sustainable, youth-centered vision for our city. This was the focus of the 2025 opening plenary in New Orleans, where we learned beside youth leaders, nonprofit partners, culture bearers, and government officials from New Orleans. We invite you to be a part of this movement, ensuring that Baltimore's future is shaped by those who know it best, our young people and the organizations that support them.
I'd like to share a brief overview of our FY23 financial audit to demonstrate how we're managing funds to support youth-centered, community-led work across Baltimore. As you know, BCYF receives nearly all of its funding from the city of Baltimore, and we take seriously our responsibility to use those dollars efficiently and in full alignment with our funding and founding ordinance, which requires that we allocate at least 80% of the fund towards grant-making and technical assistance, up to 5% for community engagement, and no more than 15% for administrative costs. The audit, conducted by our independent public accountant, was completed on November 13, 2024, and it confirms that BCYF's financial statements are accurate and materially sound, that there are no findings of noncompliance or material weakness in our internal controls. And also, we closed the FY23 with a clean audit opinion, something we are very proud of and committed to sustaining. So a few questions that folks may have is, how does BCYF calculate our admin costs and what's included? So BCYF follows the ratio cap on administrative costs as outlined in the city ordinance, and this includes salaries for administrative staff, professional services related to finance, rent, insurance, IT systems. And those are all detailed in the GNA section of our audit. We do not include any grant-making or technical assistance expenses in that total. In 2022, BCYF hired its first employee, that was me, back in 2022. And so you'll see some changes in our administration costs over time. We've built a team over time. In FY23, we streamlined operations. So you'll see here that program expenses increased by $2.2 million, while the admin costs dropped by nearly $472,000, 27% reduction in admin, despite more programs and more grant spending. For example, our professional fees, even in the administrative category, dropped by 61% from $1.4 million to $543 million. We were able to make that cut in administrative services for professional fees as we hired more staff and streamlined our processes. So we're really proud of that reduction of $900,000. In professional fees, you'll find that roughly 82%, so $2.46 million of the professional fees that BCYF pays in FY23, supported program work, grant-making strategy, evaluation, and a lot of technical assistance. And about 18% covered administrative needs, about $543,000. Those are things like audits and, of course, legal services. So we continue to evaluate what function should be internal versus contracted and to ensure that we're being able to streamline our administration pieces. Also, salaries totaled nearly $2 million. And so about $1.2 million of our salaries support program roles. You'll see, of course, too, the salaries increased greatly, because we had one staff member for most of fiscal year '22, one and a half, I think, by the end. Grant-making, community engagement, and capacity building are all included in that $1.2 million of salaries for program support. In addition, I just want to point out some other items in the audit that may be questions. And so you'll see that we do have a bad debt that is listed on our audit. And that is a grant from the 2019 grant cycle. So this was before our time here. But the 2019 grant cycle, we inherited all of those grants. When I came on in FY22, about 46 of the 72 grants were still open, and we worked to close them. There were two grants that we could not close. So we were able to make that one-time adjustment for a receivable that was deemed uncollectible after a few months of collection. We don't expect that to recur, and we've adjusted some of our protocols, you'll see, over time. In addition, our technology supply has nearly doubled. And so just to make sure that everyone's aware that our team has more than doubled, it's quadrupled from one to two people to a team of about 20. And so now I'd like to move forward to our first piece to look at our values. So justice, at BCYF, justice means transparency. This is about centering our accountability to the Baltimore community and sharing our commitment to not be a restrictive, top-down philanthropy and instead, build a funding model that's rooted in trust, community participation, accessibility, that also balances the federal, local, and state compliance. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague.
Good afternoon, City Council members, colleagues, and community partners. My name is Hannah McOver, and I'm the Director of Grant Making for Compliance at the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. As a quasi-government organization, BCYF adheres to strict reporting requirements, including annual financial audits, which are publicly available on the BCYF website and submitted to the city auditor; quarterly financial reports, which are submitted to the Baltimore Department of Finance; annual operational hearing with the Baltimore City Council; public budget and programming presentation to ensure community input and accountability; an annual report that's submitted to the public, Mayor's Office, and City Council; and a community assessment, which we hold every three years to ensure that our funding priorities reflect the needs that are identified by Baltimore residents. We also participate in a community grant review process with over 40% of youth participation. The youth of Baltimore know what they need, and that's why over 40% of our grant reviewers are young people themselves, ensuring that funding decisions are shaped by those who live the realities we seek to improve. BCYF's grantee selection process includes a rigorous review to ensure compliance with local, state, and federal regulations. Each application undergoes due diligence, first by the BCYF's grant-making team, which includes verifying the applicant's legal standing, financial records, and organizational capacity, and then moves to the community grant review process, where applications that pass through the due diligence phase are scored by a panel of community reviewers based on criteria such as justification and community impact, success measures and feasibility, alignment with BCYF's mission, vision, and values, and their budget. Finally, we work on grantee compliance and stewarding public funds with care. For our grantees, we maintain a rigorous but supportive compliance framework that includes submission, review, and approval of the following. Monthly financial expense reports are due by the 25th of each month and reviewed within 15 business days. These are audit-ready, backed by receipts, and reviewed to ensure that expenses are allowable. We also have quarterly programming reports, which are narrative and outcome-based updates that help us track real progress, not just activity. Annual deliverables include background checks, insurance verification, and site visits, which are all required by the city of Baltimore. And we also have a two-part dispersment schedule, where the dispersment of funds is tied directly to compliance. Grantees receive 50% after all documentation is submitted and approved for the first half of the year, and the remaining 50% after all documentation is submitted and approved for the second half of the year. We've started batch dates every 15 days, starting July 1 and then January 1. And this system ensures that deliverables are reviewed within 30 days by our team. And then, once deliverables are approved, funds are dispersed within 30 days, providing a predictable, transparent process for grantees. Since this batch dispersment was launched in July of 2024, 92% of our current grantees have already been in a batch for dispersment, too, which demonstrates a very strong uptake and compliance. Our portfolio and compliance teams work hand in hand with grantees, offering technical assistance, help desks, and remediation plans when needed. So in summary, we are balancing government and community accountability to ensure transparency and impact, engaging youth in decision-making with over 40% participation in our community grant review process, and supporting grantee compliance to ensure dispersments are timely and responsible. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, City Council members, colleagues, and our fabulous community partners. Thank you for showing up. I'm Cherie Miller. I'm the co-director of Grant Making for the Portfolio side. Abundance is not just about funding. It's about leveraging resources to ensure that Baltimore's young people have consistent opportunities to thrive. At BCYF, we don't just write checks. We build ecosystems of support, providing flexible, multi-year funding that allows organizations to focus on impact, not survival. We've built our infrastructure from 4% to 72%. Building our sustainability is critical. In 2022, we started with only 4% of the necessary infrastructure to scale BCYF. Today, that number is 72%. We've built the purchase request process, job descriptions for the board of directors, to orientation for new staff, and project management software. BCYF has built hundreds of policies and implemented over a dozen technology tools to drive efficiency, and we will continue towards our strategic plan goal of 100% by 2026. For community engagement and impact, our team attended over 120 community events across 22 zip codes in Baltimore City, actively engaging with local organizations to support the youth development ecosystem. We have strengthened our communication efforts, leading to a 600% increase in Facebook reach, ensuring that more families, stakeholders, and community members stay informed and connected. Our Community Month billboard campaign celebrated and announced grantees to thousands of residents, raising awareness and visibility for critical youth-serving initiatives. Additionally, we worked to secure 25 media features this fiscal year-to-date, highlighting the impact of our grantees and our collective efforts, with coverage spanning major outlets such as Forbes Magazine and trusted local media partners. We have four funds at BCYF. Our main fund is the Grassroots Fund, where we award $50,000 per year for five years to organizations with budgets below $350,000. They do have to complete a public application, and they go through the community review process that Hannah mentioned. This is 64% of our current portfolio. The Community Accountable Fund awards $75,000 per year for three years. Those organizations have to have budgets between $350,000 and $500,000. This is also a public application process, and they, too, go through the community grant review process. This is 8% of the current portfolio and our youngest grant program. The Aligned Grant Making Fund is 15% of the current portfolio dollars, and the President's Fund is 12%, and both are invitation-only. Despite having the most potent solutions, nationwide grassroots organizations only receive about 4% of philanthropic dollars. BCYF is removing those barriers that have historically... that have historically limited access to funding while ensuring compliance at all levels. We've simplified the grant application. We provide four months of free technical assistance, and we offer Spanish-language resources as well. This year, we received a record-breaking 117 grant applications, 93% from organizations with budgets under $350,000, and 97% from brown and black-led grassroots organizations. Some questions that may come up as far as the abundance is, what does multi-year funding allow grantees to do that one-year grants can't? Can you show evidence of impacts over time? So we do think that multi-year funding provides stability, scalability, and sustainability, allowing grantees to move beyond survival mode and focus on long-term impact. Specifically, it enables grantees to plan strategically. Organizations can set multi-year goals, improve staffing continuity, and invest in their infrastructure. It helps them to build trust with youth. Long-term funding supports consistent programming, which builds deeper, more reliable relationships with youth participants. It strengthens evaluation. Multi-year timelines allow the collection of richer, longer data to track real growth. It helps them to scale impact. Organizations can pilot, refine, and then expand programs with less disruption and more confidence. And it also attracts additional investments. Long-term commitments from BCYF can often unlock co-funding or support from other funders. The way that we maintain accountability over multi-year grants, quarterly reporting. Grantees must submit quarterly reports with updates on three self-selected performance indicators. This allows us to track their progress, learn from their outcomes, and intervene early if needed. We do conduct annual site visits. That's where we go out and see the programs in action, right? Meet with staff and participants and assure alignment before reported outcomes and lived experience. We have ongoing compliance monitoring tied to the dispersments: the monthly financial expense reports, employment record reports through MOED, updated insurance, background checks, and banking info. We do require annual budgets for review. This ensures financial and operational accountability across all years of funding. We do have a progressive intervention plan in place for the small percentage of grantees that may come out of compliance. We developed a tailored intervention plan that begins with supportive engagement and escalates to funding suspension or termination if necessary. A reminder that compliance is a priority for grantees as well. They want to be in compliance because they believe in BCYF and what it stands for. Multi-year funding doesn't mean no oversight. It means thoughtful, relationship-centered oversight. BCYF trusts its partners, but also expects them to grow, adapt, and stay accountable over time. Grantees, multi-year grants will end, and the required pause from applying ensures that new organizations also receive support. We have over 100 grantees and thousands of young people served, from sports to STEM, arts to mental health programs. We fund programs that empower, educate, and inspire over 17,000 young people. Every dollar we invest moves Baltimore toward a more just, abundant, and creative city. Through these investments, we ensure that youth across Baltimore have access to transformative opportunities. So in summary, seeing abundance in action. Abundance is more than funding. It's about building lasting opportunities for Baltimore's youth. BCYF has grown from 4% to 72% in infrastructure readiness, ensuring long-term sustainability for our grantees. Our community engagement is stronger than ever with 120-plus events, a citywide billboard and bus ad campaign, and 600% increase in online reach. Since 2021, we've invested over $32 million in multi-year flexible funding, supporting over 100 nonprofits and over 17,000 young people. With five-year grants of $50,000 per year, we ensure grassroots organizations have the stability to grow and lead. Again, from sports to STEM, mental health, BCYF funds programs that empower, educate, and inspire, and together, we're creating a stronger, more abundant future for Baltimore City youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Cherie. And council members, I'd like to now take the final section of our presentation to talk about one of our favorite things to talk about at BCYF, that's capacity building. We are making an investment in capacity building. Since BCYF's inception, the grant-making dollars of 80% has, we've been utilizing this dual grant-making approach since 2019. But 75% of the grant-making dollars are direct grants, 25% are technical assistance and capacity building, specifically because the fund was created to support small organizations that are grassroots that need that support and uplift in order to achieve sustainability. In our earlier years, before we fully rolled out any of these support systems, the capacity building that we're going to talk about today, our grantee compliance rate hovered around 30%. That meant that most organizations were struggling to meet expectations, not because of a lack of effort, but because they lacked infrastructure or guidance to succeed within a public funding environment. In just one year of offering our full suite of capacity-building services, our compliance rate has jumped to 92% year-to-date. That's over 90% of grantees that are now hitting deadlines, submitting clean documents, receiving dispersments on time, and ensuring their programs for youth continue without interruption. These mission-critical investments directly strengthen the organizations doing the work. And so for us, creativity means building a future where Baltimore's youth organizations are powerful, sustainable, and equipped to lead. Our capacity-building programs are grounded in cutting-edge adult learning research. They deliver results. The University of Maryland did our evaluation on our signature program, The Learning Lab, and found that 95% of participants report skill advancement. And in just one year, we've seen that success of the compliance trajectory from 30% to over 90%. Since January 2024, BCYF has engaged over 700 participants in 100 hours of professional development. We've also liked to share that all of our work is grounded in adult learning theory, so ADEGROGI. It's ensuring that the training is practical, learning-centered, and directly applicable to the needs of the youth-serving organizations. Our learning agenda covers topics like nonprofit infrastructure development, financial management, fundraising, grant-writing coaching, marketing communications, and youth development best practice. Capacity building is a commitment for BCYF. It's a commitment to ensure that grassroots organizations have expertise, peer support, and hands-on guidance that they need to thrive. We are going to share with you today a little bit about the University of Maryland Evaluation for The Learning Lab, which is our signature program and our six-month citywide learning series that's designed to strengthen Baltimore's youth development ecosystem. The Learning Lab has 500 youth seats and 500 leader seats and over 60 hours of free programming, and it equips participants over the course of six months with knowledge, skills, and networks. And the key findings from the University of Maryland Evaluation of the program show that 91% of participants reported feeling extremely satisfied, citing high-quality speakers, relevant content, and strong collaboration opportunities. 95% strongly agreed the program advanced their skills, and 91% strongly agreed it fostered meaningful connections. These results confirm that BCYF is building a sustainable and transformative learning community for Baltimore's youth leaders. I'd like to now take a look at the annual conference, the opening plenary of The Learning Lab.
New things, new way of programming from others. I am so excited about this trip because I get to learn new things, new way of programming from others in a city that's similar to Baltimore. And so I want to see what other people are doing, what's working, what's not working, so we can tweak our program and make it better.
We visited the Whitney Plantation. That's been a highlight so far because I got to see the German Coastlea Rebellion led by Charles de Lannes. And there was like about 500 people that decided to rise up and start burning down plantations. They were determined to be free. So I got to kind of see that at the Whitney Plantation, and that was a great experience for me.
Hi, welcome to Community Book Center. I'm Vera Warren Williams, the founder and director. And we're just pleased to have you here on Historic by U Road.
I think my favorite moment was actually when we were at the airport, and we all had our luggage, and we were all getting off the flight. We were like, huh, we made it. Like, you know, we were happy. And we were going to take this group picture, right? And we were all just like, well, how are we going to take the group pictures? Too many of us, we've got too much luggage. We all just hanging around, right? And so then we were told that the picture's going to be taken from above. We just took that picture, and we were like, yeah, it's going to be the best picture. It shows everyone together. So I think those are the small moments that I really appreciate about BCYF and bringing everyone together.
We are here at the Tate Etienne in Preville Center, known as TEP for short. We're right outside our beautiful mural that depicts the three six-year-old girls who were the first students to desegregate McDonough 19 on November 14, 1960. I am so glad to have this group here to learn about this history. And we always willing and love to share the story, but to have the connection with folks who are leading the charge to educate our youth, young people are really, is going to move this movement forward.
Congo Square, the experience there was absolutely incredible. There was an oak tree there that has been there over 500-plus years. And there was a spiritual ritual where you touched the tree, and you got in touch with the presence of your ancestors and just the history there.
Congo Square right now is sacred, sacred land. And we talking about, there's no red beans and rice without this landmark where we're at right now. That's why we have that saying where we say "From Congo Square to everywhere, baby." Because this is where we are at right now, sacred land. This is where our ancestors stepped foot off. But it was awful on Sundays and holidays. But they would walk six blocks up from that St. Louis Cathedral Church and come congregate over here at the legendary Congo Square under the ancestor tree that's still standing over 500 years later. Ashay, ashay, ashay.
I think it's interesting that Baltimore would come 80-strong to New Orleans to hear about the work we've been trying to unearth and move forward and carry along here. You know, you're always appreciated in other cities more than you are in your hometown. But to hear others appreciate what you've done, to hear others want to know sort of the inside story, and to be able to reflect on that yourself and then encourage the possibility of what could happen elsewhere, particularly from the lessons we learned. We learned a lot, and the learning continues.
So this is really a full-circle moment for me to be able to see two cities that I love come together to talk about the thing I love most is our community and our young people. In the youth development industry, there are a lot of well-meaning people who don't have the training or knowledge about the developmental stages for young people. They don't, they are really good-hearted, but might be doing real significant harm to young people because they haven't been supported. And I believe that our young people deserve the absolute best.
I believe that capacity building is a worthwhile endeavor because the plan isn't a one-off. It isn't a moment in time. We need capacity building to be sort of built into the fabric of this work because it has to be sustained over the duration and then positioned for the next leg. This isn't something that we do in one fell swoop. We do it overall and in a continuous way. The only way we get that done is if we build the capacity of the players, all of the players, to carry the work forward, to experience the result, to long for greater results, to exceed the expectation on a regular basis.
This has been an exciting opportunity to connect with the leaders here in New Orleans, just learning and listening to the things that they've gone through, the work that they're continuing to do, and how they were able to galvanize and bring together folks from different sectors, partners from all across the city to step into the value of young people. We know that this is an ongoing and living document, and we're excited to take our learnings from New Orleans and bring them back to Baltimore.
To have the opportunity to come from Baltimore, but to leave Baltimore to reflect on the greater work that we're doing was transformative and impressionable. But even more, it allowed us to come to a sense of how strong-minded and progressive our city is and to hear those same things that were shared here in New Orleans and how it has so much alignment and intersectionality back at home was refreshing. But I also think it ignited us to want to do better at telling our story and to do better at strengthening our collaborative efforts.
Just the amount of intentionality that has gone into this convening with this group. I don't cry in front of people. I cried during this trip. So it's just really been emotional. It's been impactful. And now I'm ready to get back to Baltimore and do the work with this amazing group.
I just learned so much about what their approach was, how they developed their processes, how they've engaged young people throughout them and honored them and their expertise and compensated them. And I'm just bringing back a lot of lessons learned that I can apply to my own work.
BCYF's all-inclusive cost of $2,500 per participant for the opening plenary is within or below the national average for nonprofit leadership development, while offering tailored programming, full travel support, and high-impact learning that directly aligns with the strategies and plans of all of our grantees, but also our plan to launch leaders to create Baltimore's first youth master plan, kicking that work off later this calendar year. This is transformative work that we're happy to be a part of. And I'd like to just share two other opportunities that we provide around technical assistance. The next one is the pre-application technical assistance, where we offer this year over 130 hours of free support to applicants. 253 grant applicants were supported through this process, 125 organizations, four months of free support, providing one-on-one, small group, large sessions, in-person, virtual, also making sure that our in-person sessions were offered in every region of the city. The technical assistance that we provide has been shown that five times more likely, you're five times more likely to secure funding from BCYF with that support. So we're really proud of the quality of the support, and we have tons of qualitative data that we can share with you as well. In addition, we offer free childcare, lunch, dinner, rideshare vouchers, all to eliminate any access barriers. I'd also like to share about another capacity-building piece that is really important. BCYF is called to be a convener of the youth development ecosystem. And every year, in addition to offering a national-level conference through the opening plenary, we offer a local conference. We have 350 attendees. These are grantees and also any other members of the youth development ecosystem, where we convene to celebrate and collaborate. We had over 100 youth performers, 30 breakout sessions with 90% satisfaction. Half of them were led by BCYF grantees, which is really important and exciting to share their wisdom with the ecosystem. And 75% of the folks who attended said they made at least one new connection at that event with an overall satisfaction rating of 4.71 around the areas of knowledge, sharing, and capacity building. So for us, creativity is all about innovation, sustainability, and building a future where Baltimore's grassroots organizations can thrive. Grants plus training plus resources, that equals sustainable change for the team at BCYF. And our team is building capacity building that has a high return on investment for the organizations that we work with, but also for our entire city, and most importantly, for the young people who are served by these organizations. In just the last year, we've seen this results from all of our evaluation, and most importantly, our compliance rate being able to soar from 30% to 90%. And so now to close out, we'd just like to issue a call to action, and of course, to all of you. BCYF's commitment does not end here. Our work continues. On June 3, we'd like to invite all of you to attend the Learning Lab's community exhibition. This is our adult science fair-style event that showcases the key learnings and transformations that are part of our signature program, The Learning Lab, which starts with the opening plenary and ends on June 3. This is your opportunity to engage with us and see firsthand how this investment in capacity building is truly strengthening Baltimore's youth development ecosystem. Also, we prepare to launch Baltimore's first-ever youth master plan. And we ask you to stand with us to ensure that this plan is not just a document, but a bold, actionable roadmap that shows the areas where we all can align on making real, lasting change for Baltimore's young people. Your partnership is really critical in making this vision a reality. And we look forward to working with all of you to build a more just, abundant, and strong future for Baltimore's young people. At Baltimore's Children and Youth Fund, we know that real change happens when we invest in people, systems, and organizations to make a lasting impact in our communities. Through our dual-investment approach, direct grants, and capacity building, we are ensuring that Baltimore's youth-serving organizations, especially Black and Brown-led organizations and grassroots organizations, don't just survive, but can thrive. This is a movement to reshape how funding can center trust, create opportunities where they've been historically denied or inconsistent. I would just also mention that 80% of the city voted, of course, many of us in this room, to create BCYF because we believe that Baltimore's young people deserve abundance, deserve creativity, and deserve justice. And BCYF is committed to helping to make that a reality with all of you. We need your partnership. We need your advocacy and your commitment. And together, we know we can build a city where every young person, every young person in our city has access, opportunity, and the power to lead. Thank you.
So thank you, thank you so very much for your presentation, you and your team. I will also like to thank you for providing a breakdown of some of the resources provided in each of our districts. So very familiar with some of those actors. And also, nice to see some familiar faces out here in council chambers, folks who have also been part of this process in many ways, whether it be grantees or other folks who are also pushing the needle forward. So very much appreciated. I do want to open up the floor for some of our colleagues to ask questions. I do want to go first to Vice Chair Parker and then to Council President if he has any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Thank you, the entire BCYF team and all those gathered here who are part of that ecosystem that we hear so much about and that you all have done such a good job of stewarding, even in these first few years of this iteration, this kind of rebirth and reimagining what BCYF can be and the impact it can make on the city. I know that the board chairperson lifted up, and I know this has been referenced before, that I think for now, since 2021, the breakdown on the, setting aside the administrative and the marketing, the breakdown of the 80% of funds that are meant for kind of direct support. It's been a 75% grant-making dollars in terms of direct grants and 25% for technical assistance, capacity building. That's been maintained consistently across these last few years.
Since 2019.
Since 2019.
Yeah, before BCYF Incorporated even existed.
That's great. And that's felt like, I mean, you all, I know because we asked and you wanted to highlight the technical assistance, capacity building side. That still feels like the right ratio from a programmatic standpoint? That you've been happy, you feel like you've been able to do what you need to do and have the right balance?
That's a great question. Actually, we think we need more money to do technical assistance because we need to be able to offer more programming to more organizations. So what we're doing is we're taking on some fundraising to be able to do that, looking at national funders and local funders to be able to support that work. The funding that we have now is really able to support and sustain the current grantee portfolio. But as you know, the need is greater than that. We have a lot of organizations outside of our portfolio that would like more year-round support and assistance. And so that would require more dollars. And so we're looking at ways that we can sustain that work over time.
That 75%, I really appreciate that. That 75%, 25% that you all lifted up that's been in place since 2019, that's embedded in the MOU? Or that's an internal decision of your own?
My understanding, I wasn't here, but my understanding is that that decision was embedded in the bylaws or a board decision. And we can find those documents and try to get those.
That was my thought. My understanding was also that it was on a board-level side, not on a, not on a city council side.
I believe that that is the case.
Okay, very good. In terms of the 15% that's administrative, and you, there was a slide, if you want to roll back to it. In particular, and this isn't critique, it's just an observation, because BCYF is such a unique organization. It's publicly funded, but it's operating in nonprofit space. And there's such an emphasis on working with grassroots organizations that need more technical capacity and staff support. So you all carry a significantly larger staff than some other grant-making bodies who operate under traditional, limited, you might say, models operate. Given the size of the staff, in particular, can you say a little bit more about the breakdown of administrative costs between administrative staffing costs versus technical support capacity building staffing costs? Because there's, yeah, essentially, how do you determine what percentage or which one of your staff members kind of count as in that, in the technical support capacity building side of the budget versus the administrative?
Sure. So the administrative budget is, let's see, our HR team, our IT team, in terms of staffing, administrative assistance, our communications team. They are partially administrative and partially community engagement with their salaries would kind of come from that 5%. Our technical assistance and capacity folks are our program officer team, our director of compliance, our director of portfolio, so the grant-making team, and any folks that are doing capacity building. So we do have a capacity building department that also builds out the learning. And my office also takes over some of those projects as well.
So within your office, is it, again, a couple of split positions?
My salary is, does have a, there is a ratio for my salary. I'm not 100% administrative.
Sure.
And so like where that plays out programmatically is that, for instance, I'm teaching a learning circle course. I'm teaching an eight-week course on nonprofit infrastructure to a group of 30 organizations. So I provide some of my expertise and also participate in the capacity building as well. And then some of those projects are also under my purview in my department. Yeah. And we can share those ratios. We have ratios broken down for every employee.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. I mean, as long as we're not getting into too much of people's personal stuff, but just helping us understand, because it's been, I mean, you raise it, we've had questions about it. And so that helps us kind of clarify just how you navigate complicated responsibilities and budgeting.
Yes. And we provide a lot of documentation on that for our internal team so that everybody's very clear on what the expectations are for their role in terms of where they're working.
Great. I had a question on the, on the grant-making side of things. I really appreciate, there was a slide that broke down the four different categories and also verbally listed some percentages, recognizing that those last two categories kind of vary from year to year. And so it wasn't, I think, talking on the slide, but it was a 15%, 12%.
Yeah, we can pull that slide back up, too.
That'd be great. In particular, on the, on the community, the community review process, right? Because embedded in the charter amendment and in the authorizing legislation is this sense that the process be deeply engaging of community participation. And in particular, to achieve, to make sure that organizations funded are credible and accountable to youth and the local communities they serve. Two of the four funds have that community review process and two of them do not.
That's correct.
Right. We'll return to the second two in a moment. But for those first two, describe a little bit more what the community reviewer process looks like. You mentioned, I think, a really helpful number was 40% of the community reviewers are youth themselves. I think 25 and under then, by the definition. Can you say more about how many participants there were, the geographic and ethnic diversity of the reviewers? Just help us imagine who's sitting down to help you all make these decisions.
Currently, we have 23 community grant reviewers. We actually wrap our process this Saturday. We're very excited to come to consensus in selecting 15 organizations to get funding this year. Right now, the young people, everybody applies and some board members and some staff members review the applications to select a wide, diverse range of community members, be it younger people, older people, people that have youth development experience, people who have attended youth programs, created youth programs, things of that nature. They go through a rigorous amount of training to learn our BCYF processes, to include our history, why we're here, how the fund came about. They learn about decision-making, bias, conflict of interest, things of that nature. And then they learn our grants management system. So today, this evening, they'll be finished. The portal will be locked to accept all of their grant review decisions. And on Saturday, we'll decide.
Very good. Geographic diversity, ethnic diversity of participants?
Yes, we have two Latino people and the reviewers right now, two Caucasian, and the rest are Black out of the 23. We had 25, two people couldn't commit to the five-week process, so they stepped out.
And how long do those folks serve in that role? I mean, I know people can opt out when they need to. But your goal is you bring them on and they serve for?
Five weeks.
Oh, it's a five-week cycle every single time? Does anybody ever repeat?
Yes. We do bring some reviewers back year to year because they have the experience of what we need them to do. And it helps with just healthy conversation in the room, especially around decision-making and building consensus and things like that. So yes, we bring just a mix of returning and new applicants.
Got you. Very good. On the final two categories here, Align Grant Making, President's Fund. I noticed by invitation, what's the decision-making process there? Both in terms of who to invite and also then how decisions get made about funding?
Sure, I can speak to that. So these four funds, we inherited these funds. They were created through that community process back in 2019. But they weren't all activated. I believe the grassroots fund was first activated in FY '22 with the first grant cycle that I was a part of. The process for the President's Fund is by invitation. I usually use a series of community meetings, speaking with board members, speaking with grantees, and also speaking with some of our partners to identify a range of topics and areas. The impetus of the President's Fund, at least in writing, what was shared with us was the ability to have some dollars that were flexible and could be more responsive to current needs because the grant-making priorities do last across three years. And so there's a process there of identifying candidates. I usually meet with them, go on a site visit. And then there was an application process that goes through our regular due diligence process. So the community grant review process is part of the grant review process. But there is a due diligence component where staff look at each application and ensure that folks have 501(c)(3) status, that they're, you know, they have the federal and also local requirements. So they go through that same process. And then the Align Grant Making is a very similar process. In general, the Align Grant Making in the past has been to support organizations where there's some collaboration or opportunity for more, I would say, networked impact from the funding. And those are usually also led by internal communications with our team and with the board as well. And those are by invitation and include the same review process.
Does it seem, does it seem difficult to fully ensure a credible, that organizations are credible with and accountable to youth and local communities if there's not a community review component for those last two categories?
No, I don't think so. I know that, you know, definitely the Thrive Arts grant was shared in the media and that organization closed shortly after receiving a grant. That's a business that closed. They didn't close because there was any malfeasance. They closed because of internal disagreements with the organization. So if they had been able to maintain, they, I think, would have done a great job to fulfill the needs of that project. We do utilize community buy-in and impact, impact statements. And I would say also, like, just speaking, because we're out in the community often, asking folks about the work. But also part of the application, the application speaks too. Just like the community reviewers are reviewing that data to see what the community impact is, the application is exactly the same application. So folks are submitting that same information and we're measuring then community impact from that portfolio and comparing it to the other. So it's looking at the same data in terms of application materials. It's just a matter of who's allowed to apply. That invitation component is the only component. The pool is different, not the process.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Sure, sure.
I have one more question. I have more I'll return to in a little bit, but I want to make sure it's a broad conversation. I'm just as excited as I am to be here for the first time, speaking with you all in this way. One of the requirements in the charter is that programs funded by BCYF should be gender-responsive and culturally competent. Obviously, it's incredibly important. And also, defining those, measuring those, understanding those is challenging for any organization. I heard that language certainly embedded in your goals and values, the organization, your mission. So I have no doubt that BCYF knows what that means for you all. But inasmuch as we're talking about the grantees themselves that you're funding, in the review, so does BCYF consider the gender responsiveness and cultural competence of grant applicants as part of the review process? So what does that look like? How do you, what questions are you asking? Or how, what are you looking for to say like, we feel confident they're doing these things?
That's a great question. I would say that where that comes into play and into question is around the technical assistance that we're offering. We have seen a need to elevate the cultural competence and responsiveness, especially around, I would say, LGBTQ+ issues for young people in our city. That is a definite area of concern for us as well. And so we're offering technical assistance around that same issue. So for instance, we started this February. We had a gather event under our Learning Lab specifically for folks who are LGBTQ+ youth leaders to come together and talk about some of their concerns and what they see around the ways that we can support young people in that population as well. And from there, we're going to be building some technical assistance and capacity building trainings that will be provided. From there, then we can have some shared language to then talk about then expectations and evaluation. I feel like that's the, kind of the first step is to get on the same page around what we expect and to define that out to the community so that then we all are going into this together to say this is, this is the expectation. This is what we're looking for. And you'll start to see that shift take place over the next year and a half as we prepare those trainings, elevate the dialogue, also provide more resource. So I don't think we can make an assessment without saying this is how you can improve. And so being able to provide those tools at the same time. And that is a real critical area for us. We believe strongly, and we built our organization around some of those principles. We have a lot to share, but we also have a lot to learn.
I really appreciate that. And certainly, even organizations that have existing very clear commitments in their policies and programs, it's always, it's always something that we need to improve at, be self-reflective, be engaged in learning and growth. And I hear you saying that that's in process. You mentioned inclusion and support for LGBTQIA youth, also Latino youth, immigrant youth, refugee youth.
Newcomers and refugees, another area that is an area of focus for us in the year ahead.
And so I appreciate that's going to be an area of focus and support tech, providing technical support and continuing education and helping update policies for existing and future grantees. But as of this moment, there isn't anything on the grant selection side that would say like, oh, wow. The absence of a clearly affirming statement, a set of policies around, around the inclusion and care for queer young people means that we have to say no to you right now until you develop that? Is that?
That is correct. That does not exist at the moment. That is correct. Yes.
Thank you.
First, I want to thank Councilman Parker. I will say is, for those, you know, very rich and detailed questions, it's great to have a vice chair who is so engaged in the topic. So very thankful for it. Do want to go to President Cohen before going to Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you again, Ms. Lee. Um, and just want to take a quick moment to thank all the grantees that are here as well, uh, for the good work that you do on behalf of our city. So thank you. Um, want to pick up where the chair and vice chair had mentioned earlier, um, related to summer. Uh, we know in Baltimore that summer can be a really hectic time for our young people, uh, that when young people have something positive to do, they do it. Uh, whether that's Youth Works, whether that's Field Trip Fridays, whether that's Summer School, whether that's any of the organizations that are represented here. Um, and we know that when our young people do not have something to do during the summer, that that creates some real challenges. Um, we are trending in the right direction right now when it comes to youth violence and we want to continue to trend in the right direction around youth violence. So was definitely, um, as the chair said, really excited to learn about, uh, some of the opportunities that B C Y F is supporting this summer. Was less excited to learn about it in a press release this morning and wanted to understand sort of as the vice chair had opened up when the mayor's team was here, uh, how those conversations took place, knowing that in the statute, in the original charter of the, of B C Y F, that, um, it is really the mayor and the city council, um, that are in charge of oversight over the fund. And so wanted to ask sort of how those conversations took place and specifically were any council members engaged, involved, um, as we went down that road?
Sure. Making sure my mic is on. So, um, we've, we've been really honored and privileged to work with the Summer Funding Collaborative for the last few years. Um, and that is where most of our aligned grant making goes every year to support summer. Um, many of our grantees also are a part of applying for the Summer Funding Collaborative. Usually we do a division of about half of our funding goes to current grantees and half goes to folks who are outside of our portfolio. Um, and so we've been really grateful for the work over the past few years, but there has been a shift in the grant structure at the Summer Funding Collaborative. For three years, we've been able to have a standard that the Fund for Educational Excellence has used 25% of the grant for administrative costs, um, as our sub-grantor. That also has included, um, technical support services as well. Um, and that 25% is in alignment with our, with the ordinance and with, with the ratios that we maintain inside of the organization. Um, therefore, there was a request this year to increase that amount to 50% and that exceeds our ratio and we just couldn't permit that. And so we were working to negotiate, we weren't able to come to a conclusion. So when that change occurred, we began to think about ways that we could still continue to support our current grantees through the Summer Funding Collaborative. And so, um, about $850,000, I think it's just shy of that, will be utilized to support any of our grantees that applied for the Summer Funding Collaborative that are in compliance and also were recommended by the community grant review process of the Summer Funding Collaborative. And I just want to check with my colleague, I think all, every, every single grantee then that would be eligible for funding of ours is going to be funded. So I'm just making sure that's true. Yes. Um, the rest of the funds, we began to think about ways that we could also build partnerships for our grantees that they are deeply, um, excited about. And those are relationships with city government, with Parks and Rec, with the mayor's office, with some of the youth initiatives. Are there opportunities for us to fund and support their partnership, um, in those initiatives? And so that's where the conversations began. Um, and so there's more to come about exactly the shape of what that will look like. And we're still going to be in planning, that's where we have a scheduled meeting with our grantees to announce the full breadth of what the programming will look like. But this is, this is definitely about centering them in these conversations. A lot of times they do arrive to work with partners, but they don't have additional resources to take on programming. So we're developing funding opportunities like that. In fact, the program with the school district is also rooted there. I think we were brought in as a partner, to my understanding, because we do have relationships with a lot of the grassroots organizations that provide sports and athletics that don't apply. When the RFP was out, this, RFP has been out for this sports initiative for two years. And some of our folks that we work with deeply have never applied and never would, I think, because of some of the challenges that we heard earlier today. So us being able to bring some of those folks to the table to build smaller initiatives over time is why we came to the table to think about the city schools and sports initiative. So that's who, when we think, for us, I mean, part of our brand hopefully is, is what we think it is, which is that we are here to represent small grassroots organizations. And so we are trying to align ourselves with opportunities that they really don't have access to getting. And so we have more to come on the structure of that, what that will look like, how to apply for those opportunities, but that's what we're looking to do with those partnerships there.
Understood. So I think sort of part of my theme here is around alignment and making sure all of us are at the same table, working together, whether that's council, administration, foundations, uh, the organizations themselves, B C Y F. And so interested specifically in the city council piece, given again that, you know, statutorily, part of our job is to, uh, support and oversee the youth fund. Were there any council people engaged in those conversations? Was there any outreach to city council members about summer?
Okey doke. So there will be, I, I just got to know that there will be an, an, an update from the mayor's office of grant, government relations. Um, and I also think maybe because B C Y F is new, we're looking to build relationships with the city council and the mayor's office and all of the other agencies. And so I think there's always room for us to understand more deeply how to do that best. And we are looking to partner with everyone. I don't think that anyone's been left off of the table, but we're looking to be in right relationship with, across the board. Yeah.
Understood and appreciated and, you know, would acknowledge the, you know, complexity of navigating all the different parties and, you know, I, I just, it is really important for me that, um, our city not duplicate patterns of siloization or, um, having conversations in one room without key partners. Um, so just want to really lift that up as a important piece, I think, for the, the council that, you know, these kind of big structural conversations, like the vice chair said, where we're sort of changing the direction, the flow of funds, um, expectations that council will be part of that as well. Um, just, just to shift, I do want to talk about capacity. You know, you all have spoken a bunch about abundance and fiscal capacity building and it really is one of the concerns that I've had just about the sector generally. Um, I, I ran a nonprofit, we banked with Strong City, it did not go well. Um, that organization really struggled around fiscal management and then we just heard or, you know, I heard in the news that Fusion Partnerships, um, is also becoming defunct. And I know that they received some funding from B C Y F. And so I really want to understand when we talk about fiscal capacity and strengthening and supporting fiscal capacity, particularly for organizations that are smaller, um, that, that are going to struggle with big, complex government grants, um, what does that look like from B C Y F? And what is the pivot now that Fusion Partnerships is not going to be doing that anymore?
I think from B C Y F, what it looks like is meeting people where they are. And so what we found is that by being able to build trust with organizations, they're able to be more honest with us about, um, the information that they have and know. So, um, for example, um, the nonprofit infrastructure class that I'm teaching, we have folks in that room that haven't seen a 990 before, um, and haven't, don't know how to navigate those documents. And we know that there's a lot of, um, ju- just like you mentioned, there's a lot of money to be made by helping to support organizations and increase the sense of learned helplessness that can be possible when you provide service, but you don't explain what you're doing. And so a lot of folks have created nonprofits because they are passionate about the work and they're eager to also be the owners of that business, but they don't have the time or the access to the knowledge and information, um, to be able to really take the lead there. And so we are making that space possible. I'm really proud of the work of the, the cohort of folks who are in that room with me every two weeks, for eight weeks, and what we'll be able to do. But we also have a, an expert learning agenda around nonprofit infrastructure that includes, you know, eight key steps. We're on step one. Um, not everyone in our portfolio is on step one, but a significant portion are. And that is because of the way that the nonprofit industrial complex does reinforce that, um, the skills and information that you needed are often hidden and obfuscated. So we're just trying to be more transparent about this information, helping people to have the resource to slow down and look back, right? And, and not to be ashamed about what you don't know, but to know that this information is available. So that is what it looks like for us and we're happy to be on that journey with organizations and that they trust us to be able to be honest. Because as you know, as you ran a nonprofit, I'm sure you were always honest, but it can be intimidating when a funder asks you a question that, um, speaks to, um, your efficacy. You want to show up well and we want people to show up well, but we can't help you to improve if we don't know where you are. So that's kind of the first step for us. And then in terms of, um, Fusion, we do have a handful of grantees, I believe it's about five grantees that are also Fusion Partners. Um, six, thank you. And, um, and we're working with each of those organizations and also working with Fusion to make sure that they transition well, um, and figuring out what, um, allowances we need to make in order to transition. So for instance, typically if you don't have a 501(c)(3) for a year, you can't even apply for a B C Y F grant. We're going to have to look at that a little differently for these organizations that are electing to transition from Fusion and become self-sustaining nonprofits. They really technically aren't ineligible, but we are going to need to revisit that to support them to transition and maintain their grant compliance, um, and, and of course the continuity of their funding. So we're working to pre-prepare detailed, individualized plans for each organization. Um, and then I think there's a long range piece, and I'm sure this is going to come out when we do the Youth Master Plan. Not every idea for cre- for a social change needs to be a business. We don't want to encourage necessarily the creation of more nonprofits, right? Fiscal sponsorship is a really great tool, but it also has to be done with a level of complexity and dedication that, um, these organizations deserve so that they don't have these interruptions to services. Um, and so I'm sure that's going to be a part of the Youth Master Plan, people wanting to see some action. And it's not something that I have the, a solution for in the moment, but I think we're going to have to think collectively and creatively about how do we make sure that small organizations and small programs even, right, can be sustainable, um, but also have the resources that they need to be fiscally sound. That's really critical. So we don't want to see any more harm done to that group of people that are working to work in those, in those smaller ways. Small is all, small is great. Everything doesn't need to grow to be a million dollar organization, to be impactful, young people speak to that. And so we do, we do need to build more structures for organizations or for programs or ideas that, um, can be sustained in these small ways. Um, and at the moment, I think it's going to take some creativity and collective thinking.
No, I appreciate that. And, you know, I, I would just note that I think we as a town struggle with fiscal sponsorships. I think we have seen it, like we've seen this movie before already. And so I think, I think it's a real concern. Um, my last question, uh, just as I think about collective impact and what it means to strategically partner sort of in the between space of foundations, government, nonprofits, um, you know, I think it's interesting that you went to New Orleans, having had some conversations with folks over there. Um, you know, cities that are really moving the needle for children and youth, there is a strategy and it is shared across entities, organizations, non-pro, you know, all the different sectors. And again, I think that's an area where we as a city have struggled historically. Um, lot of nonprofits doing a lot of different, really good work, but are there a few key metrics where we are truly moving the needle? And so I wanted to just ask you sort of how B C Y F, you all are thinking about the collective impact and what are the conversations with the foundation community, with, you know, a- all of your grantees about sort of making sure we are having true impact on a few key areas?
Sure, I can s- speak to more what we're doing and then I can think about the vision that we have for the collective piece across the city.
Sure.
So we're kind of in phase one of our outcomes plan at B C Y F and that grantees do right now submit to us every quarter, um, their outcomes that they've selected and they are in alignment with the grant making priorities. However, what we're really looking to do is tell a more cohesive story about the impact of the grant dollars. And so what that means is each of our five priority areas, we've already identified a key outcome, um, that young people deserve to have in our city. We need to work together and build some infrastructure around, um, selecting some key metrics that everyone in the portfolio can agree to collect with integrity. And, but what I mean by that is some, some things are harder to collect. If I ask you to collect them, you'll say you did and just give me the number. I get that. But we really want people to be able to submit clean data to us that really speaks to the collective nature of the, of the impact of the whole portfolio. That's kind of phase two for us. Um, phase one was helping folks to be able to identify that for their own programs, um, in alignment with us. So when we're able to do that, we'll be able to say, great, with these dollars, um, we'll really be able to speak to the, um, return on investment of the grant dollars and the capacity building by saying, these are how the outcomes are playing out with young people. We're really excited about that and our goal and our strategic plan is to have that finished by the end of 2026. Then in terms of collectively, that only speaks to the work we're doing. We still need some uniformity across the city. Um, and that's why the work of the Youth Master Plan, which I do want to say, um, the work of the Youth Master Plan, the idea to get there doesn't come, I wish it had come from, um, B C Y F leadership. It really came from the grantees and the collaboration of grantees, staff and board being in Alabama last year. So the opening plenary last year, we went to Alabama to the legacy sites to really take an investigative, um, look at the history of, and also the sequential nature and the storytelling elements that are involved in seeing history from a clear line and being able to solution around next steps. And what we left that, um, experience with was a clear call for collaboration and more uniformity, more alignment, more collaboration, more working together. And the, there was a call in the room for, we need clear goals. We need like two or three things that we just agree on and we say, let's work on this, solve it and move on. And so we began to do our research, well, ha- hasn't anyone done that before? And we found a lot of cities that had basically this idea of a youth strategic plan. The New Orleans plan drew our attention specifically because it was so youth-centered. As you heard Julia DeBussolo talk about in the video, they compensated young people, young people laid out the vision, the metrics and the areas that they want improvement and they defined those, um, the criteria for success. And so that's why we are centering our work there. It just feels like Baltimore and New Orleans also have a lot of simpatico. Um, but I think there's a lot of, uh, energy in our city around centering youth and leadership. And I think this could be a next step for our city and really understanding the power of young people to dictate what comes next. So that's, we're, we're thinking and that's going to take, B C Y F wants to support that work, but we want to be one of the people in the collective impact strategy of creating a Youth Master Plan. Um, and we're going to need, of course, the eds and meds, we're going to need other foundations, we're going to need the grassroots folks. And the last piece I, I'll just mention is, we took our grassroots folks because they always come last. So typically in this kind of environment where we're like, yeah, let's create the Youth Master Plan, let's go down to New Orleans, we would take the largest institution leaders and we would all go together and learn and then we'd come back and we would trinkle down the learnings on the grassroots folks and say, well, this is what we learned and we just flipped it. And we took the grassroots folks and now they actually have all the expertise and connections and then we're happy to bring everybody else along. Um, I've been asked by a few other leaders to plan to take the trip again, to produce the conference again with a group of leaders who of course would all pay the 25, the $2,500 rate. And we were, we are happy to do that work again. But these conferences and, and that experience, this is what we curated specifically to be able to have the outcome of a Youth Master Plan that's going to be sustainable, that's going to be collaborative, um, but also centering the leadership of the folks that we know are the most close to young people.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I would just say, I think it really needs to be Baltimore's master plan and Baltimore's young people's master plan. And so that piece around the collaboration, I think, is going to be key for it to be credible and particularly centering the voices of young people themselves. Uh, but also that, um, you know, all the different silos, sectors, organizations that, you know, everyone can feel it, everyone can see it. I think that's when we do that, that is when Baltimore succeeds, when we are just in one space or another, we don't. So again, thank you, um, Director Lee, uh, and thank you a lot, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, for especially raising the, the points of, uh, the collaboration with the city council in this process because again, we all want to be at the table in terms of serving our young people. So much appreciated. Um, do, do want to also make note of the time, we have about 30 minutes left in our slot and I want to provide an opportunity for, uh, public testimony, should there be some, but I want to go to Councilmember Ramos next, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and thank you to B C Y F and, and all the grantees. I will tell you, I'm very new to this topic. Um, I have a kid, but I am not, I have not worked in the youth space other than with the affordable, um, out of school time network years ago. And, uh, so I'll make sure that the young people have a house to live in that's affordable and not next to a vacant property, but I'm learning from all of you today. So I'm really grateful, I'm really grateful for all your work too. This, working with young people is a calling. It really is. And all of you have accepted that calling and are putting your heart and soul into our kids and I think that's great. I will support you in any way I can. I do not have that gift, I will just tell you that, but, um, I will try to make, to support as much, as much as I can. Um, so again, you'll have to excuse me, I have some, probably some basic questions that you've asked in the past, so, um, uh, if you'll indulge me for a second. Um, the first thing is just a, a housekeeping thing. Um, the slides that we got were not the slides that you showed us. Um, so can we get the packet that you showed us? Okay. Great, thank you.
We will see some requests to update them, so, but we'll get you the updated version right away.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, also the, um, community needs assessment that you, um, mentioned, you do that every three years, is that right? When was the last time it was done?
The last time it was done was FY '23.
Okay, so you're due for another one next year?
Yes, we start in September of this year.
Uh-huh, to do that as well. Um, and that's basically to inform your grant making. Um, are you going to dovetail that with the master plan thinking?
Yes, exactly, yep. We'll use the same, we'll use the same, some of the same vehicles to be able to get that work done.
Okay, can we have the 2023 one just to give us a baseline? That would be great. That would be a formal request for the committee, uh, Mr. Hayes. Um, great, thank you. I'm looking forward to, um, to seeing that. I had a question about, you had mentioned a PR campaign, a busk and campaign and everybody's wearing the cool t-shirts. Um, it was my understanding that you're not looking for new grantees right now, so kind of what's the, oh, you're not, I mean, what's the point of the, of the campaign?
Oh, we are.
To show, is it to show the success of the, the grantees and the work that they're doing or is it?
That's a great question. Thank you for that opportunity. So the billboard campaign, um, launched in August to, um, it was specifically about all of our current grantees. I think it was 113 billboards, around that amount. Um, B C Y F month is in August and so there's a lot of attention around B C Y F. And that's when we make our announcement of all of our new grantees and then we also share everyone who's in the portfolio for the year. Then the busk campaign was specifically around the grassroots fund and community accountable grant cycle. Um, they've really transformed the number of people that were able to come and get pre-application technical assistance. And I think also, um, we're really proud of what the pool looks like. Um, it's the largest pool we've ever had, um, and it's also, um, 97% black and brown.
Mm-hmm. So that's really for marketing your, your programs then and the successes of the programs?
Specifically the grant, the grant cycle.
Right. Well, bus ads are kind of expensive, so I'm, I'm wondering if you could supply us with, you know, what does that marketing budget look like? Um, just so that it's a, a factor that we can take a look at in budget time.
Absolutely, sure.
Thank you. Um, and thanks for clarifying, um, that piece. Um, I also noticed, uh, your board is seven people, eight people right now? Um, and the charter says you can go up to 20. I do not advise going up to 20, I will tell you. I've been a, um, nonprofit, uh, executive director for a million organizations, it seems, and also, um, a consultant, but 20 is too much, so don't worry about that. Uh, but it does say in the charter that one of us or the council president has to be on the board. Um, and it also says that a young, a couple, a few young people also have to be on the board. So, yeah, so what's the strategy to be able to recruit the young people?
Sure, I'm going to let Emily Corrigan speak to that.
Hi, uh, my name's Emily. I work as the executive assistant and the board administrator. Um, and we're really excited to announce that we will be starting a recruitment season on April 14th, where we will be, um, onboarding four new youth board members by the end of April 14th where we will be onboarding four new youth board members by the end of June. So that will begin on the 14th with the application closing a month later and we would love your support in sharing the word about that. So we'll definitely make sure that you have all of those materials and we'd love for you to share that out.
Well, most of us, all of us are on socials, so you just need to get us a graphic.
Amazing.
And not just that, but also on the other things that you want to get the word out. And some of us have newsletters that go out every Monday. So, so you know, those kinds of things, we are your partners. So we want to be helpful in getting the word out about those. So yeah, especially the youth board members. I know it, it is an additional technical assistance challenge sometimes to have young people on the board, but it's such a valuable experience for them. So I'm glad that we mandated you to do it, but also that, you know, you're going to move forward on that.
Yeah, and our board is also committed to, we're undergoing some adultism training. Because really the technical assistance component for youth board seats is really with the adults in the space.
Wow, that's.
To make room for adult leadership.
If I could, if I could just jump in, like, so we've had young people when we, when we moved and became incorporated, we had young people and we wanted to be really intentional about the next cycle of young people. Just as Alicia mentioned, we oftentimes, many of us who work with young people and have young people on their boards, we do work on young people versus the work that we need to do with adults. And so we're being very intentional about undoing adultism, right? Before we bring young people in and making sure that young people, I mean, making sure that we as adults are part of that recruitment process. All of us have either worked with young people or connected with organizations of, I mean, I've ran a bunch of organizations over the last 25 years of my career working with young folks and so we, I have that relationship along with my colleagues. And so there's some on the ground work that we'll do, but then also tapping into the resource that is, and that are our grantees, right? Who work with young people. So, you know, tapping in, but we wanted to be really intentional about the training and the work that needed to happen to us and with us as adults, working with young people so that we're not creating tokenized seats that many organizations do, right? Oh yeah, we got young people on our board, but what do they actually do? We want to be intentional about the work and the, the relationship with young people as board members, not youth seats.
Yeah, and I appreciate that intentionality as well. And I would imagine you're also looking for diversity. Our Latino population is growing, particularly our young people are, you know, that, you know, 20% of the school system. So I mean, I think it's really important for that representation as well. So thanks for that, that news. And so you'll be getting us that in the next couple of weeks to?
Definitely within 30 days, but most likely sooner.
Okay, yeah, yeah, great. And also let us know like what the time commitment is? Is it monthly in the evening? Is it, you know, how, they're going to need to know, that kind of thing.
Absolutely, all of that will be included in the materials.
Sure, okay. Just a couple more questions, Mr. Chair. I know that you want to get to public testimony. So I had a question also about the relationship between the grantees and the organization and the grantees and the board. You had mentioned you do a lot of technical assistance, which I think is great. Is there, what's the feedback loop if there's complaints?
That's a great question.
From grantees in terms of whether or not it's a, you know, miscommunication, whether it's, you know, documents? What is that feedback loop? What, how do you?
Sure, I can speak to two elements of the feedback loop that we have. In our, we do have a survey that goes out every quarter where grantees can share feedback on the service that they're receiving from us. We're happy to share that data with you as well. And then the most exciting feedback loop we have is our grant task force. Most exciting thing about a task force is it starts and it ends. So this group worked for about eight months, looking at pain points that they had. We were really trying to look at holistic ways that we could elevate compliance as a collective group, understanding that we play a role also in the non-compliance of grantees, right? And so the task force had about 45 grantees represented and we worked for eight months. We came with a list of key pain points and then solutions. Actually Larry was also a part of the task force. And then we implemented all of them. So every single change, even from the restructuring of our leadership team and grant making, now we have co-directors for compliance and portfolio. We restructured the role of the program officer. We also did, I would say like, in very much in the weeds, some guidance documents around budget guidance. People were tired of their budgets being rejected, right? And so we prepared more detailed guidance documents so that they could understand our expectations going in. So all of those different kinds of things, we've, we've done a lot of work. I, I would say one of the other big pieces that was a blind spot for us is we were reviewing financial expense reports, for instance, and sending back a rejection notice of the rationale for the rejection. That wasn't helping people to figure out a next step. So we were then able to work over the summer to create a composatory list of rejection statements, right? So that when you get a rejection at this point, we're pinpointing you to where in the manual that information is. So not just that, it's rejected, but why, the rationale, and then the next steps that are in place. So that level of support has actually been able to allow us to then streamline the technical assistance process. You don't need to meet with us about the next step, it's right there. And so we can really focus then on compliance in a different way. So all of those are key feedback pieces from grantees that have helped to do the process improvement.
And you do that more, are you going to do the task force again every year?
We are going to do the task force again. We are going to do the task force again. And the one outstanding component of the task force is around the depth of the, of the documentation for financial reporting.
Yeah. That is a complaint for every nonprofit ever and I understand, you know, and it is, I understand it's necessary, but it can be overly burdensome. There's no doubt about that. And obviously if it's a federal grant, it's like, you need a whole staff person for that, I understand. But you know, so you have to have that balance.
We are looking for a balance and right now the depth of reporting exceeds federal grant making, so we're eager to be in collaboration to think about a, a process that is more in alignment with what we know the structures of staffing that a grassroots organization has and also meets the demands for the high level of scrutiny that this fund has. So we're looking to collaborate and, and we're open to that.
I guess.
And we have lots of documentation on suggestions.
Yeah, just the last, last point on that piece is, you know, obviously anybody, any organization that may have some significant difficulties with the organization doesn't want to also complain because they also receive money from you.
Sure.
So I want to make sure that there's some way, whether, Mr. President, that's a complaint to us since we do have that oversight role or whether it, not that it might happen, I just want to give the, you know, I think it's really important to make sure that there is this, if somebody does have a complaint, that there's a way to be able to address it without, you know. So again, I don't know if that's something that we should encourage and, well, I'm going to just encourage it and come to us, but also that the, you know, when, and just continue to ask about that piece and, you know, ways to, to continue to have that, that feedback.
Yeah, that would be really helpful. For a mine, for a mine, a minor complaint, we don't have a process like you described. For a more major complaint, there is a process embedded in the, in the grant process of, there is a arbitration component and all of that. There is a, in the grant agreements, yeah, that's included and we can share that language too.
Oh, sure.
But that would be, that would be not a complaint, that would be more of a breach of contract.
Right, and you all, you know, have all of the various, you know, required policies as well, which, you know. But I'm just thinking if there was any, you know, because we encourage that also when the strong city debacle was occurring and that was very helpful for the grantees, not that you're doing the same thing, I didn't mean to compare, I'm sorry. But I have a lot of PTSD about the whole thing because I'm a Greater Homewood alumni, okay? So anyway, but I appreciate that you're really thinking through these various pieces. I, I probably have some other internal conversations and because I'm new to this, I may ask you for a one-on-one because I'm also up for good field trips, so you know, happy to look, do some site visits as well. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to, to dig into this issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos, again for always having some detailed questions and also opening up another line of conversation, which is very helpful. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, I'll try to be really quick. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for coming and presenting today and this is really important work and for the, you know, hard work you do every day to invest in our youth and our children. They truly are the future and going to be the future of the city. So I love seeing us have this conversation about making the investment on the front end and rather on the back end and talking about how do we heal broken men and things, so, and women. But just quick questions I had, when it came to your grassroots fund and community accountability fund, I know they're multi-year funds. So once someone cycles through like that three-year fund or whatever, can they reapply and get another three years or kind of once you're done and you're out?
So the grassroots fund is now a five-year fund.
Oh, yeah, five.
50,000 a year and you do have to take a pause at the end of the fifth year and then you can reapply after you've taken that pause.
Okay, so is that pause one year or is it a whole nother five-year cycle or?
It's one year, it's a one-year pause, yes.
Okay, so and I know like there's a limit, right? As far as like what your budget is and when you qualify and can qualify for that fund?
350K.
Three, exactly, I saw on there. Just mindful, just want to know if you're all mindful and try to, I know one of the goals is to build capacity, so these organizations can become larger, can do more and then you want to support them so they can do more. What we just want to be mindful of is that organizations intentionally choose not to grow, like so they no longer qualify for your budget, they no longer qualify for your, for those funds, you know, that way and then you end up with the same organizations getting the money over and over because they're, they're the most qualified and they're used to doing it, but they can grow out to the next step, but they choose not to because they kind of can continue to rely on the fund over and over. Just want to know whether or not there was mechanisms in place because we see that in other agencies and I'm, you know, see that in, you know, the MBEs and different things where people don't want to grow out of the system. And then what that does is that bottlenecks the system sometimes and prevent others from, from having an opportunity. So just wondering if there's mechanisms in place or things you looked into to prevent it?
It, it's not to say that it doesn't, but I haven't seen any evidence of that from the grantees that we have. Growth for us doesn't always necessarily mean, and I know, I know it doesn't mean for you either, but budgetary growth. Sometimes we're really thinking about program quality, but the grants are also, these 50,000 grants, while they are a lifeline for many, the goal is for, to grow out of that being such a critical lifeline, right? And so all the organizations, especially I'm thinking of the group of 30 organizations in the cohort for the learning circle, they're interested in sustainability, part of their sustainability plans not being reliant on grant funding. They're interested in, in exploring models of support that allow them to be sustainable and confident in the program quality that they're able to offer from year to year. And philanthropy may be that thing, but it may not be. So I would say that's what we're working with grantees to, to think about, maybe, which is a different thought for a funder to say, let's think about other mechanisms of funding, but sustainability may not lie in grant making. It may lie in other areas of support. And so that's what we're trying to work with organizations to understand what their options are and then they can choose how they'd like to proceed.
Okay, yeah, that, that'd be great. And just so, and kind of always just encourage them, you know, to continue to grow and, and look into other methods of sustainability. With that said, the, while I'm happy to hear about the additional investment in youth fund and, and you know, and the, and the school system athletics and everything else, one thing I just want to make sure we're not doing is using this youth fund to circumvent other investments the city kind of, or other folks should already be making, you know, and supplementing like our, I think when I thought of the youth fund and when I hear about it, it was additional funds, you know, for our children. And I, I understand we're in an emergency situation and, you know, in uncharted territories and sometimes we have to pivot and do things differently. So I commend the nimbleness and the partnership, but what I just don't want this to do is every year now, we're using this youth fund to supplement investments that we as a city should be making in on our youth. This should be on top of the other investments, so.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right, no, okay, just one, I guess we're on the same page with that one, okay? All right. And lastly, with that said, just youth master plan, because you just let me know the timeline, because you know, what, what it looks like, because I think that is something we're lacking. Because while we're making these tremendous investments, we still see some of our children just out in the street, just having not nothing to do, looking for, you know, just, just idle mind is terrible for our, for our children. But if we're talking about, we're investing millions and millions of dollars in our youth, it should be something for every one of those children to do. And I think what we are missing is a master plan. I would love to see it because that'll help that, just wondering what the timeline looks like.
Absolutely. What, what we've learned from our colleagues in New Orleans is that we should anticipate a year and a half to two years to be able to go from start to finish. And that would be with continuous momentum and so we're anticipating that. We're starting and kicking off this fall with a series of trainings for the adult leaders around dismantling adultism. And that's how we plan to bring all the stakeholders together so that we can start. These kinds of plans are organized in all different kinds of way across, across different cities. We would like to take the approach of, I think all of you are in agreement here, but in implementation, we may meet some challenges of really taking youth voice at the center, meaning young people are dictating to us what the goals and priorities are and then moving from there with the institutions to figure out how to support, to support that work. So we do need to do some preparation because that kind of citywide effort to center youth voice just hasn't happened. And it's not to say anything bad about Baltimore, just we haven't had the opportunity to do such a citywide effort to really center young people in that way. So when those trainings and, and workshops kick off this fall, we'll be looking for lots of stakeholders to come and join us. We have a lot to learn as well about ways to fall back so young people can step forward and then the work will begin.
All right, great, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Jones, for talking about the, the youth plan, because again, that, that is important and as Council President said, it's really important that it be Baltimore's youth plan, right? So again, I think it's very strategic timing for all of this. I do want to thank you for all the work you've done, you and your team and everyone who's here today. I know Councilmember Vice Chair Parker has some questions and so actually I'm going to turn over the chairmanship to Vice Chair Parker for the remainder of the hearing. But again, just thank you all and I know the public testimony will be great and I'll be keeping the ear out for that as well. So I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate Councilperson Ramos for bringing up some aspects of board. We covered a few areas already. I do want to note the, the foundational documents say that the board shall reflect a diverse economic, social and racial mix. We've already spoken about the one-third requirement embedded for young people. Part of that, when B C F is failing in any given year, despite best efforts to reach that number, they're supposed to ask the B O E for a, for a waiver. Has that happened in recent years?
No, that has not happened.
Okay, just, just want to double check, I asked B O E too, but I want to make sure everybody's on the same page. In terms of then reflecting the diverse economic, social and racial mix, who do you think is, as you think about expanding both with young people, but also more generally, you'll, at that point, you'll have about 13 people who still have room, you don't have to max out. I, I take the Councilperson's point, but you have room to think about whose voices are missing aside from young people. Who do you think's currently missing from the board and what kind of voices in addition to young people are you all looking for in your next board recruitment process?
That's a great question. We've really been focusing on the youth seats because that's the area where we know that we need to maintain one-third. And we have had young people on the board before and we're looking to bring those youth seats in. In terms of the diversity that, that we've been looking for, we've really been looking for a set of skills. So we have a set of skills, I think that we've outlined, we have not outlined, like we don't have a quota for race or gender. We don't find that to be a best practice, but of course we're open to hearing, you know, more feedback.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that the.
Oh, Larry would like to, sorry.
Yes, please. I would also say that we have a very equitable way of how we even connect to the community to say we're looking for board members, right? So we don't have this secret tunnel where, where some organizations will tap certain people to say, hey, we're going to have some seats open. We don't do that. We make it very public, we make an announcement on social media, we make an announcement on the news and folks are able to apply. It's a very simple one-page application that does not go into your finances, it doesn't go into, if you have 100 letters behind your name, right? We want those folks who have a connection to young people, may have had an opportunity to even run youth programs, but folks who are city residents, who live in the neighborhoods that many of our grantees are serving and who can speak to the work of youth development, the importance of youth development, but who also, as Alicia just kind of mentioned, who have a set of skills that may be a little different than other folks who can kind of help, right? Like any other board, we're always looking for folks who have those relationships, those networks, a little financial acumen, right? But at the same time, we don't lock outdoors to folks who may not have that, but who also have a love for young people, right? Who can come into the space and teach us something that we don't know. So we don't have a closed door. We don't have, um, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Asia. Yeah, we don't have a, we don't have a closed door. It's not a, a secret way to get into the, um, to get onto the board. It, it is open, it's an open policy, I mean, it's an open door policy. And then also, we are part of the selection process, right? Alicia and her team doesn't, they don't dictate to us who's going to be on the board and who should we, we should be looking for. We as a board kind of do that, and then we work with Emily in that whole process. I mean, to be very honest with you, uh, going back to the, that whole young people piece, right? When the organization kind of was first put together before any of us kind of came, it was this, um, tokenist kind of space of, you know, youth seats. And, and I think about that in other organizations that I, I serve on the boards, where we've had that conversation and we've been able to change the policy and say that these young people are just board members, right? Who just happen to be under a certain age, right? We, and the same is where we are right now. We're not making an assumption that they don't have dollars to contribute because they, they do, right? And oftentimes, it may not be the dollars, but it's the relationship and the time that young people may be able to offer where me at 50 may not be able to do, right? And so we want to really be true to, um, the young people and the communities that our grantees serve and the city that we serve, right? So being open all the way around with how, um, folks have access, have access to our board.
Yeah, absolutely. No, and I, I think, I think the, one of the things I appreciate.
I was gonna say, no, Vice Chair Parker, uh, and, and thank you, um, uh, for, for your question, the comment. I would just say, um, to the public, I know there'll be opportunity for testimony, just want to make sure that we get through the question and answer, but again, we'll, we'll love to have, uh, folks, um, testify, so we do have plenty of opportunity for that. So I'm, thank you for the passion and glad to hear it.
Yeah. No, I, I appreciate the, the feedback both from the CEO and from Board Chair on that matter. Um, I, in that regard, I really appreciate that it's not in any way a quota aspect. Um, I think I've, I've seen organizations that work like that, and it never works well. Um, and also, given the wonderful diversity of communities, ethnic backgrounds, ages, geographic spread across the city, um, in your grantee organizations, it's helpful that that diversity spreads up and down from the board all the way down to the grantees, right? Um, uh, especially, I mean, I'm especially mindful that, uh, the districts I serve is, uh, has a huge population of young people. I mean, most of our schools in our district are somewhere between 50 to 90% Latino. And making sure that, that, that as we think about working with young people, that that penetrates to all levels of the organization so that, um, all those perspectives are heard up and down, right? So I wanted to lift that up in particular. Um, I think that is, can, can somebody speak to maybe the Board Chair? Somebody speak to the conflict of interest policy, I mean, all boards have conflict of interest policies, but in particular, I think in the past, uh, members of the board, uh, have been part of organizations, uh, were also grant recipients, just, and, um, that's not the only time and place that happens. Uh, but speak a little bit to what, what kind of guardrails are in place to make sure that's healthy.
I can speak to myself.
Great.
Because I, I think that's probably where that's coming from.
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't?
No.
Well, some organ, some of us were, um, a part of organizations prior to the board even being established, or this new, uh, governing board versus the working board. So there were two of us who were part of organizations who received funds prior to us joining the board. And then once we was, joined the board, um, the organization wasn't, B C Y F wasn't going to snatch the funds from the organization. Um, for one of the, the, me in particular, uh, was a board member of, board member and founder of B City. B City received funds while I was still a part of B City. Um, now I'm Board Chair, B City's still working through the funds that they received almost three years ago. Um, so those kind of conflicts, you know, we have to be upfront about, you know, who we're connected to and what we're involved in, and then, you know, whatever action needs to be taken, right? Um, but there are none of us who are currently on the board applying for grants. We, to just, I mean, I just would look crazy if anyone's doing that, right? And so we are very clear about the financial forms that we have to submit to the city, um, because we are a quasi-agency, so there are things that, you know, we all do because we are a quasi-agency, right? And so that's making sure that our, um, financial forms are put in every year, um, making sure that we are constantly submitting any conflicts of interest because, you know, life changes and, you know, you build different relationships and get connected to different organizations over a year's time. So making sure that we're up to date with, so to making sure that we're all up to date with those things. But we have a very, um, tight and, um, very strong system of just, you know, being, um, upfront and open about what, what conflicts we have.
Very good. I appreciate it. The, the last question I had, uh, it's following up with the conversations we had, and then it would be right to public testimony, Ms. Kim. Um, has to do with, uh, uh, the significant size of this newly announced, uh, gift. If, if I recall correctly, in general grant makings, $15 million is your total budgets around that area. Um, $8 million announced today, um, uh, especially $6 million towards youth works definitely feels like budget replacement of city, city spending. Um, and very, uh, especially the, not only the nature of it, but also the size of it seems huge. So where are those funds coming from, given, you know, you all are very good about making sure that your money is being pushed into these very specific places? How, how is that $8 million even, even possible at this moment?
I, I think we, we would prefer to meet with the finance team and be, be able to really pinpoint for you in dollars and cents, um, exactly where those funds are coming from. And so we'd be happy to even come back with that team, but I think I prefer if my finance people were here so they could speak specifically to the exact numbers. I don't have the, the budget with me or in front of me. But definitely those numbers are present.
Yeah, I mean, it's make a huge difference. I just, uh, yeah, scale-wise, it's, it's, it seems, you know, asks, begs questions.
We don't anticipate any interruption to the grassroots fund or the community accountable fund dollars for next year.
Thank you, that's really helpful. Thank you so much. Very good. Uh, we'll turn our attention then to public testimony. I think we had, looking to, how many folks do we have signed up? Let's call them in order. Great. I don't see Kim on here.
I do want to repeat that. We don't anticipate any disruption to the grassroots fund funding or the community accountable fund. This would be separate from that.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Call Kim. Very good. We'll turn into public testimony now. Um, uh, Ms. Trueheart, did you have, uh, did you have some words to share?
Just the people with checks want to testify.
How you doing today? Um, I go back to a decade ago when I used to stand up here and ask the then-mayor and Director of Children and Family Success, when were they going to do a strategic plan for youth? Um, I am not clear on the difference between your master plan and the strategic plan for youth, but I hope that the outcomes for both meet the need for identifying how we're serving the youth, what the gaps are, and that we're going to close those gaps and ensure that every child across the city gets access to the services and programs that they need. I'm proud to say that here a decade later, we're getting close. The use of being served in a way that they never have before. When we talk about youth-focused organizations, they've never received training like they're getting right now. They've never received the opportunities to grow and thrive like they are getting now. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely. But just the mere fact that something exists that is focused on them is phenomenal. I have to thank Alicia for her work and Larry. Um, you guys are exceeding expectations in many ways, but I'm, I'm still looking for more, lots more. Um, there was a comment made in testimony about partnerships with the city. The partnerships are fine. You can have deeper partnerships, but I thought I heard suggestions about youth fund money going back to city agencies. That's a non-starter, and if we're talking about that, let's kill it right now, because the youth fund money is not to go to city agencies, but it's to go to community agencies, And the last thing is I've been asking for capital funds for our programs. Somehow you will have to legislate that we get some capital funding authority. It's imperative. We've seen what the operational funding can do, and it's making a huge difference. But we also operate in spaces that need improvement or new spaces. Capital funding is important. Um, and lastly, just thank you. Um, I appreciate your questioning. I appreciate your interest in becoming a parent of a child becoming of age. All of us need the care. And Zeke, you got an opportunity being a parent to help make this better because it can be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trueheart. Uh, we'll call on Renee Tengella, uh, who's our next person who signed up.
Thank you so much.
Um, and just, just so everybody's on the same page, we'll be, we're doing three minutes, uh, for everyone moving forward, so we get through our speakers.
He's just shining a light when I'm done. I don't know what three minutes is, okay?
He's got it.
Okay, thank you. All right. My name is Dr. Renee Tengella. I'm the founder and CEO of Peaceful Warriors. I'm a retired educator for Baltimore City Public Schools. In 2022, I retired from teaching. Um, I have been a B C Y F grantee since 2018, be, before Alicia's time, um, but I am very grateful to be here in front of you today. I want you to imagine a time in your life where you're hungry, you feel loss, grief, trauma, stressed out, anxious, can't catch your breath, have chest pain and exhaustion. Many of us carry this pain throughout our lives, from childhood to adulthood, and many of the diseases that plague our community are preventable. The trauma, the stress, anxiety, our youth experience contribute to low academics, uh, low academic achievement and low self-esteem and low, low self-worth, sometimes leading to unhealthy behaviors. We see the negative impact of our students and we wonder why are they out on the corner if someone just asks today, or why are they not doing what we want them to do? Because a lot of times, we don't even address the issues that they are going, that's going on in their life. And by the time we get into the, the, um, punitive role of trying to lock them up or put them out or do whatever, it's too late. So Peaceful Warriors was created during a high violence time in the city in Baltimore. We seek to be a proactive solution to the problems of our youth and families. From the beginning of our integration, our inception of B C Y F, B C Y F has, has not only been our funder, but we family now. Their support is instrumental to why we are here today, because without B C Y F, we probably would not have started. B C Y F is instrumental to our organization's growth, our, their funding has also helped us to learn, not just to provide to the kids, but also to provide to us, to fill our cup so that we can then give that back to our kids through workshops, the learning lab, fundraising, sustainability, and storytelling, as well as through travel. Yes, we have been to places, and I am better for it. I'm more focused and I understand now my purpose in, in this life-changing work. Travel is important because sometimes you must leave where you are to expand your circle so you can see a bigger picture in how to solve the problem. Sometimes you can't understand the plight of a community if you are in it so deep. We needed to go to, um, New Orleans. We needed to go to Alabama. If we don't see the systemic problems that are a part of our history, we will repeat that. And yes, in Alabama, we learned about the Legacy Museum, and I saw, and I, and I know my history, but I saw the people, my people in the water, I saw my people struggle, I saw integration to segregation, how it is still a thing. And yes, um, all the things that we have done with B C Y F has been instrumental to who we are today. B C Y F has, um, helps, helped us to expand the meaning of what it means to have a funder, but also to have a funder that believes in the work that you do. Peaceful Warriors is a grassroots organization seeking to help our community heal from the inside out by providing wellness tools of yoga, meditation, mindfulness, and healthy eating to help release stress, anxiety, and normalize wellness so children and families can thrive. My name is Dr. Renee Tengella, and I appreciate the President Alicia Lee and the board for being here today, and I appreciate the opportunity to tell our story.
Thank you, Dr. Tengella. Uh, we'll turn to Angelo Solera.
Good afternoon, buenas tardes. Uh, distinguished council members and Council President, uh, my name is Angelo Solera. I am the founder and executive director of Nuestras Raíces Inc., a community-based Hispanic Latino cultural organization in East Baltimore. I'm here today to express my, our deep gratitude for the support we have received from Baltimore Children and Youth Fund over the past two years, and, and to emphasize just how vital this support has been for organizations and the youth we serve. Thanks to B C Y F, we have been able to operate our Latino youth cultural workshop series at Casa de la Cultura, providing a safe, creative, and empowering space for Latino youth to connect with their roots through art, painting, music, dancing, theater, and storytelling. For many of these young people, this is the first time they have been able to see their culture reflected, celebrated, and taught with pride. But C, B C Y F has provided more than just funding. The technical assistance, the learning labs, the one-on-one support from program officers, and capacity building resources have helped our small community-based organization navigate the complex nonprofit landscape. This type of support is often at, at a reach for grassroots organizations like ours, and B C Y F investment has truly been transformative. We have witnessed real change. Children who were, who once were shy and unsure now they're leading performances, sharing their stories, and embracing their cultural identity with confidence. These are a kind of long-term, life-changing outcomes that only happens when youth-focused, community-rooted programs are given support, are given the support that they need. Of course, challenges remains. Our Latino community is still underserved and underrepresented. We need more investment, more culturally responsive programming, and more support for the organizations that are closer to the ground. But B C Y F has shown what's possible when trust and resources are placed directly into the hands of communities. On behalf of Nuestras Raíces Inc., thank you for believing in us, in the power of culture, community, and youth leadership. I urge you to continue and expand your investment in organizations like ours so we can continue building a stronger, more inclusive Baltimore for all young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solera. Uh, we'll hear next from, uh, Ms. Edward.
What's the first name?
Uh, Ballet After Dark, Tide Courtney.
She had to leave.
I'm so, so sorry. Um, I, Ms. Carrie from Walker Avenue.
My name is Asia Carrie. I am the founder and executive director of Crayons and Culture. I am also the president and CEO of the Culture Connect Group. Uh, I am a resident of District Four. Um, my comment is around the undertone. This is Baltimore. There is a national undertone around cultural competency and race equity, and I want to make sure that we get very clear that we're on the same page, and I expect those who've been in community, right, and who have built careers in community, to address undertones that perpetuate a problem with us speaking about cultural competency. to address undertones that perpetuate a problem with us speaking about cultural competency and/or race equity and/or racial demographic makeups because we're not doing that in Baltimore. I want to thank the leadership of BCYF, the board of BCYF, okay, the voters who have stated this, but that divisiveness, I'm calling it out as a resident every time. So let's check it, and I expect the leadership that's been here to not allow that to be permissible. These undertones, we know that Black folks specifically have not been supported, that Baltimore has divested specifically in Black communities flat out. And so we're not going to play this little political game. So I expect y'all to address it before the community has to address it because I am a community member and I'm gonna address it every time. That's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carrie. We'll hear, I think our final person who's signed up is Cameron Giggers from RISE Arts Center of Baltimore.
I think she had to, she had programming. Sorry. She had to go back to work.
Understood. Yeah. Are there other folks who'd like to come forward? We have a little bit of time. Yes, in the blue shirt. Please identify yourself when you come to the microphone.
Hi, good afternoon, city council members. My name is Lisette Olmos Godfrey, and I am a board member of LEAF, and I'm here on behalf of the president and CEO, Denora Olmos, of the Latino Education Advancement Fund. She was unable to attend today, so she asked me to testify for her. With over 30 years of experience in the education sector, Denora is deeply honored to provide testimony about the transformative work of the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund, BCYF, and its critical impact on our community. LEAF was established in 2018 with a fundamental belief, parent education engagements are crucial for student achievement, especially for first-generation Latino parents and students. Our context is compelling. Baltimore City's Latino population has surged by 77%, growing from 4.2% to 7.8% of the city's population. More than 90% of Latino children are US-born, with roughly half having an immigrant parent. 21% of Latino children have parents with less than a high school education. Approximately 49% of Latino households are headed by women. These statistics reveal a complex landscape where first-generation Latino mothers struggle to navigate an unfamiliar education system, often feeling powerless and uncertain about supporting their children's academic journeys. Our organization was founded to empower Latino families, particularly mothers, to navigate the local school systems, serve as advocates for themselves and their families, pursue the dream of higher education and post-secondary success. From our humble beginnings, serving 15 Latino families in Southeast Baltimore, we have grown to five programs supporting over 50 families in Baltimore City last year. The transformative role of BCYF. Our journey with BCYF represents more than just a funding relationship. When LEAF repeatedly faced legal challenges, I mean faced challenges securing grants, BCYF did not simply provide financial assistance. They became our guide, our mentor, and our advocate. BCYF, under the leadership of Alicia Lee, embodies what I call tough-love leadership. They have provided critical funding to small impactful organizations doing the work on the ground, offered technical assistance to nonprofits with grassroots missions, stewarded public funds to ensure services for children and youth, empowered organizations like LEAF with full agency, liberated us from the constraints of structural racism and equity. Most importantly, BCYF has given us more funds, more than funds. They have given us credibility. They have taught us commitment, accountability, and continuous improvement in serving our community. BCYF is not just an organization, it is a catalyst for change. They are creating a coordinated youth development focus and aspirational citywide community worthy of our collective best efforts for our children and youth. Through their support, LEAF's work exists. Our work counts. Thank you so much. Sincerely, Denora Olmos.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Terry, Uncle T Williams. I am the CEO of a program called Challenge to Change in East Baltimore, and I am so proud of you, Alicia. I am so proud of you, Danielle, passing the torch on to you, and I believe that she chose the right one to pass it to. Here we are 10 years later, 10 years later from when our former councilman, President Bernard Jack Young, and it was 80% of the councilmen that went along with the very foundation of why we are here now. And I trust that y'all are part of that 80%. 10 years later, my son got murdered in 2013. I was totally lost for two years, not knowing what to do, where to go. And there was a gentleman by the name of Dr. Leaf. I was appointed to talk with him because I was trying to wrap my head around and get back footing on that tragedy. And he said to me, why don't you try to take all of that energy and wrap it up into a program? And Challenge to Change was kind of birthed out of that pain. And I heard someone say in BCYF that they have made monumental strides and successes, and it would be an injustice for the people they served to not be striving and achieving the same. And I am here to say that when I got my first grant, it was through BCYF in 2018. I was one of the first rolloff that they assist us financially. I had no idea what this whole business was about. All I know is that I didn't want another mother and father that had to suffer what I suffer, hadn't gone to the scene to see a hole in their child's head, and then have to preach their funeral. And with BCYF's support so diligently over the years, both technically, you know, they have, they have truly created a mindset in my program where infrastructure had became very, very important. I was just operating off the fact that my children and my people were hurting, and I was one of those children. I spent 25 years of my life in this system. I know what that pain looks like. I know what it smells like. I know what it feels like. And when you have organizations such as BCYF that support us financially because they understand the magnitude of the problem. And I am telling you, when I heard the councilman said that this is a calling, so this is not what I do, this is who I am, meaning that you can't fire me from this. Like, if I didn't have a penny, I would still do what I'm doing. But thank God for programs like, you know, BCYF supporting us, grassroots organization. With that being said, continue to do the great work. There's so much more to be done, and we will do it together.
Hi, my name is Danielle Brown, and I am the founder and the executive director of the Cody Young Empowerment Youth Charities, and it is my pleasure and my honor to speak how wonderful BCYF has been to me, the work that I do, and my family. I am, as I said, the executive director and the founder of the Cody Young Empowerment Youth Charities. And as a mother who tragically lost her only son, Cody, to gun violence in Baltimore City, I am profoundly grateful for Baltimore's Child, Baltimore Children Youth Fund and their unwavering support for the city and the children of Baltimore. In the aftermath of Cody's passing, I was driven to honor his memory by creating the Cody's Cave. The Cody's Cave is a safe haven for male youth between the ages of 14 to 22 in Baltimore City. We provide alternative and actively contribute to reducing gun violence in Baltimore City. We provide culinary programs. We provide safe spaces for them to be in, to flourish. We provide job readiness. We provide haircuts and homework. We provide a multitude of different things from educating them to college tours, and this is all through the work that you have allowed us to do with the resources that you have given us. Thank you. BCYF has been instrumental in the growth and the development of Cody's Cave and the youth that we serve. Their comprehensive support has included invaluable training for our youth. The BCYF passionate, has been passionate in their advocacy for the youth's safety, and we have been able to significantly impact over 83 youth in Baltimore City through our program. So today, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity, and not only giving us the opportunity, but giving me many Codies to cherish throughout this process. Thank you so very much.
Hello, my name is Marcia Williams, the manager of operations for Challenge to Change. I'm just going to be briefly an extension of Uncle T. I'm just going to talk about the impact. The impact of BCYF's support is felt deeply by the youth we serve. I want to just share the story of just a, just a few lives that have been changed forever. Sorry, I'm just getting emotional. When we first started, as Uncle T said, BCYF was the first to serve us, to fund us. We served only 10 children at the time. Today, over 50 youth are part of our program on a regular basis, and that number skyrocketed to over 100 youth during the summertime, during the summer month. But it's not just about the numbers and the transformation of these young people undergo. It's about family. It's about time. It's about love. Take, for example, Dominic. When he first came to Challenge to Change, he struggled with confidence. He was angry, failing in school, getting suspended, fighting almost every day. He was disengaged from school. He was still in the stores for food and eventually got arrested. Dominic didn't believe in his ability to succeed. With this mentorship, Challenge to Change, and support from our team and BCYF, as well as the opportunities to grow and develop through BCYF's funding, Uncle T, the CEO, picked Dominic up from jail, placed him in our program, gave him a voice, counseling resources, mentorship, and assigned him a certified life coach. Today, Dominic began to believe in himself. He's now an academic achiever and a leader in his community. His story is just one of many, where youth not only overcome obstacles, but rise to become role models for others. Dominic is 16 years old, a year-round youth worker, and serve on our youth advisory board. See, the real success is in the long-term commitment we see from our youth. Many of our young people who joined us years ago continue to return year after year after year, showing their dedication to personal growth. Correll, who started in our program as 11-year-old, was very, very, very withdrawn with failing grades and uncertain, and in the sixth grade is now a 15-year-old sophomore, straight A student in high school. He is an active local youth leadership initiative, plays sports now, found the passion in basketball, planning to attend college. He credits the mentorship he received here as the key to his transformation. Correll loves Challenge to Change. He volunteers to pick up trash around our buildings, volunteers his 30 minutes tutoring younger youth in our organization. BCYF investment in us has allowed us to expand our program, grow our team, create our environment where our youth feel valued, cared, supported, and empowered. We moved into a large space to accommodate our growing numbers, and we now plan an even further expansion as we continue to see more and more youth come through our doors. Without BCYF funding and resources, none of this will be impossible.
My name is Ron Willoughby. I'm the pastor of the Broken Wall Community Church, the founder of the Broken Wall Project, and the community quarterback for the Frederick Avenue Corridor Enough Coalition. It is the ones who no one imagines anything of who do the things that no one imagines. For me, that quote captures the essence of those for whom many of us have been called to come alongside, to encourage, to support, to offer a bit of guidance, but mostly to offer friendship to in the other America. In our city, there is approximately one nonprofit for every 200 residents, depending on what list you look at. Last time I checked, it was over 3,000 registered 501(c)(3)'s in our city. But instead of working for synergy and with a sense of community and cooperation, we've had walls that have separated us. We've been separated by scarcity mentality. We've been divided by zip codes, the nature of our work, and 250 unique neighborhoods in Baltimore City. Our isolation from other like-minded people has been one of the greatest impediments to our making significant strides with and for the youth in our city. Let there be no mistake, many of our organizations are doing good work, but working alone is simply not good enough. In the past two years, through my association with the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund, I've had the privilege of seeing an excellent leader in Dr. Alicia Lee build an organization from scratch that is specifically focused on building a sense of community and camaraderie among youth-focused organizations in the city. I'm grateful for the opportunities afforded me and others to learn best practices from those in the field, as well as to continually have my prejudices and my white male assumptions about how the world works challenged. In my estimation, the BCYF and Dr. Lee are a gift to this city and especially for the grassroots organizations that lack the capacity to grasp wider visions and peer into future vistas. At the risk of sounding melodramatic, we together recognize that we stand on the threshold of time. Thanks to you, we have looked back over the centuries of racism and injustice and oppression. And with the help of BCYF, we now look into the future beyond the horizon of our own existence. Dr. Lee and BCYF continue to give us the encouragement and the will so that with every child, youth, young adult parent that we see, we are collectively reminded it is the ones who no one imagines anything of who do the things that no one imagines. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your public testimony. I have a word. The council president has a word, and then if the president has, and CEO has a final word for us to wrap things up. I want to say thank you all so much for, for your time and attendance this year. We've had a long afternoon. The reality, of course, if you, if you saw the documentation and the annual reports that BCYF sent to us, it was at least 80 pages long, the very first document, because all the work you were doing is so incredibly important and transformative, and they are so proud of you and want us to know the impact that you are making and to tell your stories. And so the billboards and the social media posts and this time, to give this time and this space, it's not enough, but at least it's something. And so thank you for amplifying their voices and helping tell your story here. I mentioned in the beginning that BCYF doesn't fit into normal boxes, not a government agency, it's not a traditional grant-making nonprofit organization. It's, it's something else, and that's by design. From 10 years ago, when I was down at Digital Harbor Foundation, just as a pastor in the community who was there at Jack's invitation to be present and to support and be excited about what you're doing, to now, it's, it's intended to be something else and to have a different impact, especially the resources, not only resources, but support, real collaborative support and partnership could flow to grassroots organizations who are otherwise, had been and continue to be shut out of traditional funding mechanisms and traditional kind of nonprofit, kind of corporate mentalities that exist in the city, especially ones where, where people, folks doing work where, where decision-makers didn't understand or grasp the mission and frankly, didn't respect the wisdom, the leadership, and, and the capability of the people coming before them, asking for resources, and the communities surrounding and supporting them. And so BCYF is, is doing that and doing that so well. The loudest voices criticizing BCYF and their The loudest voices criticizing BCYF, and there are plenty, are people who we all know don't in any way have the best interests of Baltimore City children at heart. I mean, that's, that's not their agenda. That's not what they care about, and so they're not engaging these conversations with, within any kind of good faith effort to support young people in the city, whether that's Black young people, Latino young people, immigrant refugee young people, gay, lesbian, trans young people. None of these things, none of these people are seen by them or cared about by them. But you all care, and you all see, because they're your neighbors and your participants, they're colleagues, and BCYF sees and makes sure that you have the resources for it. We see those young people too. These are our neighbors, our community members, our children, right? And so we are so excited to continue to be in partnership with BCYF as we move forward. The other exciting part is this is working, right? Your testimony speaks to this is working out bumps and bruises and pandemics and all the rest. 10 years later, here we are, right? And the good work is happening all across the city. And as the organization continues to grow alongside you, as you grow, the organization is growing, and we, as the city council, I'll speak for myself as vice chair, but I think on behalf of my colleagues, are here to continue to grow with you all to make sure that the things that we control, that the backends of legislation, things like that that govern and shape you, are evolving to match the evolving mission and sense of purpose of the organization and what the grantees need, and to continue to have a dynamic relationship rooted in that shared commitment to the well-being of our young people, right? Operating in good faith and out of that same sense of purpose and shutting out the voices that, that, that don't care about any of this anyway. So thank you all for being here. Thank you for your testimony. Council president.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and now Chair. Thank you, Director Lee and your team. Thank you to all the grantees again and the board. Special thanks to some of the folks that were here at the very beginning of this journey. I see Ms. Kim Truheart in the back, Larry, who else? Uncle T was around. And I remember that time where the city council and Time City Council President Jack Young, one of my predecessors in this job, had this feeling that the city generally was not doing enough to support our youth. That was the prevailing sentiment. What the youth fund would become, I think there were a lot of different visions, and it was complicated, and there was a lot of meetings and participation among all sorts of different communities, but I think it came from a place of we, as a city, as Baltimore, are not doing enough for kids. And I'm grateful to Mayor Young for his leadership in that moment, grateful to Ms. Kim, to all the folks that were there that bolstered that vision and put it into legislation, and grateful to the grantees who have continued to practice that work and to the organization for fostering it and nurturing it. I think we are in a critical moment as a city where we have seen some tremendous progress on reducing violence. We've seen the really negative population trends begin to go in the other direction. And again, we know that help from Washington DC is not coming, that this is an administration over there that is hostile to cities like Baltimore. And so I think in this moment, it is more important than ever that we have that sense of family, have that sense of alignment, have that sense of community with each other, that we are really clear about data and outcomes and alignment and making sure we are moving in a direction that, I'll just say, you know, the, the council's job is to be an accountability partner, and I will never, ever apologize for council members asking sharp questions of this organization. That is both statutorily our duty, and that is what we are supposed to do, and we will continue to do that. But I think in this moment, it is really important that collectively Baltimore owns its master plan, Baltimore owns its strategic youth plan, whatever we end up wanting to call it. But, you know, I think in a strange, strange way, Baltimore has an opportunity, despite the chaos going on over there, to demonstrate stability and to demonstrate that multiracial democracy can still work without needing to demonize trans people, Latino people, LGBTQ people, any sort of people that actually we're stronger when we're together. And, and I think that is the, that is the work that BCYF stands in. I remain concerned about fiscal capacity of small organizations in our city, and, and I remain really committed to making sure that when we're in conversation with the administration, with the mayor's team, with community, that council is there as well, because I think we need to be, and there's a perspective and a voice that is really important and that this work must be driven first by young people, but also by all of us in this city. So again, I want to thank Director Lee for the work. I want to thank everybody that showed up and stayed today. I know this is a long hearing, but I appreciate you all. I appreciate the chair for conducting it, council member Ramos. We're all parents up on this side of the thing, so it is good to know folks are fighting for our kids. And again, thank you for today, and thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Ms. Lee, final words for us tonight. Bring it home.
Thank you so much, councilman. Thank you to the council for your support. We feel really invigorated by your offer of partnership, and we are excited to be able to do this work and especially our next steps, our next big vision around the youth master plan. We can't do it without collaboration. We wouldn't do it any other way. And I just want to give honor and, and some just gratitude to our incredible board chair, Larry C. Simmons. To our, to our board members who attended today, took off from work today to come to be with us, to our incredible staff and team, and of course, to the reason we do all of our work every day, to the grantees and the young people that we serve. Thank you so much to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. This hearing is now adjourned.